In case you weren't aware, we do have two brief meetings to begin before our main meeting that most of you are probably here for. So call the meeting to order of the Eagle Mountain Community Facilities District Board Meeting. Roll call, please.
Chairman Schlum.
Here.
Vice Chair Cantino.
Here.
Board Member Legere.
Here.
Board Member Brown.
Here.
Board Member Hanson.
Here.
Board Member Elke.
Here.
Board Member Dickey.
Thank you. Any speaker cards?
No, sir.
On this item? All right, we'll move on to consideration of approving the Eagle Mountain Community Facility District Board Meeting minutes of August 5, 2010. Second. All right, any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Nays?
Chairman Seven Zero.
Thank you. And now we'll move on to item two, consideration of resolution EMCFD 2011-01, approving the tentative budget of the district financial fiscal year beginning July 1, 2011, ending June 30, 2012, and setting a hearing date for the budget and annual assessments. Can I get a motion?
Move.
One second. All right, do we have a presentation on this?
No, Mayor, actually, this is as part of our annual budget process. This is the Eagle Mountain Community Facilities District that was formed in 1996 to sell bonds for the infrastructure, and annually, we set the annual tax levy for to repay those bonds, and that tax levy is anticipated to be $1.50 next year.
All right, thank you very much. Any discussion on council on the item? Mr. McGuire?
Mr. Mayor, the resolution that's in your packet contains notification and hearing dates that'll have to be modified based upon the change that we anticipate to the annual budget for the town, the moving back a couple of weeks. So whatever the motion is indicated by including the authority to change those dates as necessary before it's executed.
We have a motion in a second already. Who had the motion? Councilmember Hanson. Mr. McGuire, are we able? Is that acceptable? And same second?
Yep.
Thank you. Any other discussion questions? Anyone from the public on this item?
No, sir.
All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Chairman Seven Zero.
Good. Look for a motion to adjourn. Second. All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Now move on to the special session of the Cottonwoods Maintenance District Board Meeting. Call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Chairman Schlum.
Here.
Vice Chair Cantino.
Here.
Board Member Dickey.
Here.
Board Member Elke.
Here.
Board Member Hanson.
Here.
Board Member Brown.
Here.
Board Member Legere.
Thank you very much. Any speaker cards on this item?
No, sir.
All right, move on to item one, consideration of approving the Cottonwood Maintenance District Board Meeting minutes of August 5, 2010. So move. Second. All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Chairman Seven Zero.
Thank you. Item two, consideration resolution CMD 2011-01, approving tentative budget for the district, fiscal year beginning July 1, 2011, and ending June 30, 2012, and setting a hearing date for the budget and annual assessments in alignment with the town's timing on the budget.
Move with the ability to change the data.
Thank you. In a second. Any discussion? Anything else on this item from our acting interim, town interim, acting deputy?
What is?
Town manager Getty.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. I'll just briefly say that this district was formed by the town council in 1999 for the purpose of improving and maintaining the area within that subdivision of Cottonwoods, and each year, the town levies a tax to repay the town for doing the maintenance on that, and it's $3,300 total. Yes.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion questions on this item? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Chairman Seven Zero.
Item three, adjournment. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Move.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, we'll adjourn until 6:30. About four minutes. Thank you. Welcome, welcome. I'll call the regular session, the town council meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation by Pastor Steve Bergerson. Welcome, Steve.
Thank you. Let us pray. Our gracious God, we rejoice tonight that 44 of our young people from this community and sponsors and chaperones are going to El Salvador. We pray, Lord, you'll keep them safe in their travel to and from El Salvador, and that in their service to the poor as they build homes, their hearts will be enlarged and understanding of this world will be increased, and you'll plant in them a seed of passion for service to others. As our town council liberates tonight, Lord, we pray for unity of mind in those decisions they make they agree on, and charity in those things they disagree, that they might do what's best for this community. We ask all this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Steve. You're welcome. Pastor Bergerson's from Shepherd Hills Lutheran Church, there in El Agua and Fountain Hills Boulevard. Thank you again. Roll call, please.
Mayor Schlum.
Here.
Councilmember Dickey.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cantino.
Here.
Councilmember Legere.
Here.
Councilmember Elke.
Here.
Councilmember Hanson.
Here.
Great. Mayor's report, just want to mention that Councilmember Legere's birthday is coming up on May 24. Happy birthday. And not as positive, but important reflection as well. Six years ago today, Councilmember Dickey reminded me, six years ago today, on this day, we lost our councilmember Kathleen Nicola. So take a moment tonight at some point remembering the awesome spirit of Kathleen, who it's appropriate tonight, we have all the youth here, who just really live for the youth. So remember Kathleen Nicola, our councilmember we lost six years ago today. We move on to something extremely exciting. I think everyone in the audience knew something was up with all the color, and we're fortunate to hear a presentation from our former town councilmember Enrique Melendez, who is now the honorary council for the Republic of El Salvador, and others we'll be hearing from relating to the team of tacos, June 2, 2011, trip to El Salvador, our sister city of Taco, and the community's humanitarian efforts. So we'll open it up and go right to the presentation. Take it away.
Before I begin my comments, I would like you all to put on your happy faces, because this is the very, very exciting part of the meeting tonight. So you got 'em on? Good evening, Mayor Schlum, Vice Mayor Cantino, council members and staff. About five years ago, I stood before another town council, and I presented the national colors of my native country of El Salvador to then-Mayor Wally Nichols. Today, I'm very proud to be here in front of this council to hopefully accomplish two things. The first one being is to thank you on behalf of the Salvadorian government, the president of El Salvador, our foreign minister, the people, the mayor, and the city council of the city of Ataco. I believe that what we're doing tonight, Mayor, is going to be something that's going to be remembered for many years to come, many years to come by all of us, certainly by the students who are participating. I've told them often, you will remember this, your children will remember this, and your grandchildren will remember this. But I want to also thank former councils, past councils. I'd like to pay tribute to Councilmember John Kavanaugh, Councilmember Mike Archibald, Councilmember Ed Key, and our Councilmember, late Councilmember Keith McMahon, because they had a passion and undivided support for the country of El Salvador. You know, while I'm thinking, making thanks on behalf of the government, I also like to thank the Maricopa County Sheriff's Department and their deputies for providing, headed by Captain Joe Rodriguez, for providing exceptional diplomatic security when we had our foreign minister here, if you recall, Mayor, and other ministers. So I want to thank the sheriff for his support. Also want to thank the people that often don't get recognized, staff. I believe that we have one of the finest staff units in the state of Arizona, Julie Getty, our attorney over here, Bev Bender, Shawna Williams, and many others. So I'm going to make sure that they get recognized because in their day, as busy as you all have them, they have a little bit of time to dedicate themselves to international issues and work for countries on behalf of you in Germany and El Salvador. Now, Mayor, I would like to, before I get into the special things that I need to talk about, how can we forget the three people that are sitting behind me, the three mayors? Mayor Wally Nichols, who was the first mayor to sign the agreement with the city of Ataco. His passion, devotion, and heart, he and Sheila, for the people of Ataco is unquestionable. Thank you. Then we have Mayor Jerry Miles, who at the early beginning of our relationship, took a $14,000 check that we raised in the community to help the earthquake victims in the city of Ataco. That, to me, is very special. I think it's appropriate, Mayor, that I recognize some of the other things that we've done here in the community. For instance, the American Legion Post 58, and I know you had some up here in your office, made a substantial contribution to the battalion of soldiers from El Salvador that joined our American forces in fighting a war against terrorism. Those soldiers were earning $60 a month, and thanks to the American Legion Post 58, we were able to get them uplifted and help their families. Medical Hands That Heal. This is a group made up of doctors from Mayo Clinic, Scottsdale Healthcare, private physicians headed by a good friend of mine, Dr. Vincent Russo, a prominent physician and orthopedic surgeon, who happens to be the brother of one of our councilmembers that's smiling at me now. These groups have been to El Salvador for five years in a row. They spend seven days, and they perform an average of 117 surgeries each week. This comes to about a $1.5 million pro bono, and they leave the equipment there. The other issue I want to talk about is the Rotary Club. Through the great gesture of the Rotary Club of Fountain Hills, Art Ammon, one of our citizens, took a container of wheelchairs to San Salvador to help the handicapped. Those are the types of things that I think are remarkable. Then we brought three kids here from Ataco to study English, as you well know, to the sister city. The last thing that we did, thank you, Mayor, for you and the council, is we hosted the minister of, a foreign minister unprecedented, that we had a foreign minister in a small town of Fountain Hills, and it was a terrific thing to do and well remembered. And now, the best part of the program. Last August, in the middle of the hot summer, I was drinking a glass of Merlot outside, and I got a phone call from a lady called Claire McWilliams. And she said, "Council, I'm a teacher. Last year, we went to Uganda. This year, I think we want to go to Haiti. Can you tell us a little bit about El Salvador?" So I spent, I don't know how long it was, Claire, but a long time on the phone, and she said, "Council, we have to vote in the morning. So give me all the information you can give me." And so it took place, the next morning, I think 150 to 0, the students voted to go to El Salvador. In October of last year, through the great help that Superintendent Bill Meyer gave us, and he continues to do that for our community, and the school board, we got an approval unanimous. They blessed us to go to El Salvador, and the journey began, the mental journey, the phone calls, the emails, the meetings with the parents, with the chaperones, with people like you, Cassie, and others, at fundraisers, and finally has come together, Mayor, we are ready to go. In 13 days, 44 students and 15 chaperones are going to be landing on El Salvador soil, your constituents representing you and doing something that will indeed make a difference for many years to come. So on behalf of the government, and a personal note, I'd like to thank God for giving me the energy, the help, and for sending me a guardian angel, my beautiful wife Pam, that without her and her support and love, nothing could be accomplished. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council.
Hi, Mayor Morgan. How are you?
I am fine, thank you. It's hard to follow that speech, but on behalf of the Fountain Hills Sister Cities, I am honored, and I am as excited, I don't know if I'm as excited as 44 kids, but I'm excited about being able to facilitate and coordinate their trip. This is their trip. This is from the school, but Sister Cities has played a role, and I got to do that, of coordinating and working with family and friends both here, and we could not have done this trip without the help and the generous support and help and love and enthusiasm of Enrique's brother Carlos down in El Salvador. He has been instrumental. You talk about phone calls, emails, his whole staff is working on this. So on behalf of Sister Cities here, I am proud to be going with 61 other people to El Salvador on June 2. And I just want to say something that we've always said in any presentation about any sister city trip, so that we don't hear and you don't hear from people. Not one red penny has come on this trip from the town coffers, from any of the, it's all on the individual person's dime. Every one. All of these kids raised all of their own fares. They raised all the money to build the houses, and we are going to build 13 houses down there. We will bring you back reports and pictures, but I can't wait for June 2. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Morgan.
No pressure, girl. Well, good evening, and thank you for having us tonight. My name is Claire McWilliams. I've been teaching at Fountain Hills High School for the last 14 years of my life, and I am an advisor for the Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America, which is a class-integrated leadership club that teaches students leadership through community service. I teach hotel and restaurant management, but I always emphasize the point that I really don't care if the students go into the hospitality industry or not, they'll find their way there if it's meant to be, but the universal skills they'll get along the way will serve them in any field. So many of them here are bound for that, and many of them are not. But all of us are bound for El Salvador, and we're happy to tell you about it today. So I'd like to introduce Haley Rippey. Raise your hand, take a look. All right. Megan Engler, Kaylee Shields, Cara Guy, and Samantha Van Zee. And we're here to kind of give you just a short tour of duty of how we got to where we are today and what we have planned. So, thank you.
I am Lupe. I'm five years old. My family eats dinner outside of our small dirt floor shack. I hear the rain hitting our tin roof, and it begins to pour. Then we huddle together for warmth. I hear the adults talking. They're worried. The downpour is like waves of water from the sky. I awake to the sting of cold water. The floor of our home is now moving. Papa says we need to leave. We gather up what we can and race out of town. It's hard to walk. The mud is so deep. It's so cold, my teeth chatter. We sleep in the church. When we wake up, we find out our home has been washed away. We didn't have much, but now we have nothing. We are homeless in a third-world country. Students wanted to choose a shared issue faced by people inside and outside of our community and country. Two years ago, our chapter collected backpacks and school supplies for children in Uganda and sent them, sent them in hand-delivered to the people in Uganda. Students had a great interest in gaining similar international service learning experiences. Each year, we selected a cause that then, and then designed and implement a service project around it. Two tips that helped us put our service projects together this year. A member of Fountain Hills Sister Cities informed us about a mudslide that happened in the summer, taking about 435 homes of our sister city of Ataco. An alumni of Claire's program told her about a school for homeless children in Tempe, Arizona, that were struggling to serve the needs of their students. The economy and foreclosure rate prompted this question. What does it feel like to be displaced from your home? The question for you is the one that can be answered by us Fountain Hillians and many others inside our state. It can also be answered by the residents of our sister city of Ataco after experiencing a mudslide and the loss of over 400 homes. So we named our project "A Place Called Home," because no matter what you call it or where you are in the world, it's what everyone needs. A home is a place to rest, regroup, and feel safe.
I am Jasmine. I am seven years old. My dad's gone, and my mom can't find work. We live in an apartment in Phoenix. Then we had to leave. I go to a special school called Children's First Academy. There, I take warm showers and they give me clean clothes. They give me food to bring home on the weekends. Things are hard right now, but I know that they have to get better. I am homeless in the United States. The objectives of our project are to explore the impact of homelessness and displacement, to develop our leadership skills, and to give us a chance to make a difference both near and far. We conducted a town-wide double donation drive to benefit our local partner and our international cause. We planned and implemented a number of fundraisers to raise money to rebuild homes in Ataco, El Salvador. We then gained approval from the Fountain Hills School Board to do an overseas service trip. We are now sending FCCLA members to El Salvador to assist with rebuilding homes as well as bring back a bit of culture to educate our community. Children's First Academy agreed to be our local partner. A group of students then scouted the campus, met with their superintendent, and learned all about how the campuses operate. In 2008, the Tempe and Phoenix schools reopened as charter schools, and they now offer the students clothing, food, and medical care, along with amazing academics. One in five homeless people in Maricopa County are children. Thirty percent of homeless families in Arizona have children, and they are the fastest-growing segment of the homeless population. Young children, young parents, low incomes, weak support systems. These are all characteristics shared by kids at CFA. We decided to do a double drive to make an impact near and far at the same time. We gave every student at partnering schools a rolled garbage bag, asking them to place gently-used clothing and hygiene items inside to help children at our near charitable partner, CFA. As you can see, the clothing portion of the drive was a great success. We had over 7,000 clothing items and 3,000 hygiene items donated. We will be sending a huge supply of winter clothes to Ataco, and the rest is going to CFA. Earlier this year, a team of students delivered our donations and set up CFA's expanded clothing closet. In November of 2009, 435 homes in our sister city of Ataco were lost to a mudslide. The government in Ataco has decided to designate a special area which will be named Fountain Hills of Ataco for residents to rebuild, and they will actually have their land deeded to them, which is unusual in Central America. to them, which is unusual in Central America. To provide a symbol for our far recipient, we made change banks out of milk cartons to look like the colorful homes of Ataco. After our garbage bags were rolled and our change banks were created, we visited the schools that agreed to partner with us to share our project. Our partners included Fountain Hills High School, Fountain Hills Charter School, Creative Childcare, and Fort Peaks Elementary participated in the clothing portion. Our project was met with lots of excitement, and the younger kids were excited to work with the high school students. We also offered a prize of ice cream parties, parties to the winning classes. We then created a change war and clothing drive contest between the classes at the high school. For each penny donated to their class, they earned a point. For every nickel, dime, quarter, and dollar they put in other classes, they stole points. At the high school, the sophomore class won the change war. The entire class then received a breakfast party to celebrate their victory. The high school raised a total of nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. The charter school raised eight hundred and sixty-six dollars, and Creative Childcare raised two hundred and sixteen dollars. Overall, the change drive brought in two thousand and fifty-six dollars. We counted and rolled, rolled the change, lots of change. Fountain Hills Sister Cities as well as the Town of Ataco are valued partners in the international part of our program. Dwight D. Eisenhower was the first person to set up the Sister Cities in nineteen fifty-six. Today, there are over two thousand cities worldwide. The existing relationship between our town and the Town of Ataco makes the project even more special than it would be. Fountain Hills Sister Cities and Enrique Melendez have helped make it possible to create fundraisers in town and a safe trip to El Salvador. This project has been very busy with our double drive that they've mentioned earlier from CFA, Children's First Academy, and fundraisers that were held on campus and with, with the help of Fountain Hills Sister Cities. First, we went down to Tempe, Arizona, to a Feed My Starving Children plantation that they have, and we packed food and nutrients for kids, starving kids around the world. There were ninety-five of us that went over two days, October twenty-ninth and October thirtieth, and all together we packed twenty-three thousand five hundred forty-four meals. Three point eight million meals alone were sent to El Salvador in two thousand and nine, which is pretty amazing. And we had a brunch at our school, where kids bought tickets and came there instead of lunch, and we made the famous dish in El Salvador, papousas, which are made from a corn masa flour, and we gave them beans and corn and like sour cream to top on them, and had delicious cupcake for dessert, and from that event, we made seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars. We also walked in our Thanksgiving parade, where you saw all of us dressed in our colors, our white and blue, and we also had a student dress of Ataco and hold an A up, so it's like, "A, Taco!" And we also won the Best Children's and Church Affiliated Float Award. Jerry and Jackie Miles were nice enough to hold a fundraiser at their home, where many Fountain Hills community members attended, as well as most of us that are going to Ataco, and there was eight thousand four hundred dollars raised that night. And last but not least, we did a Cupid Arrow for Valentine's Day. We raised seven hundred and sixty-six dollars, and we put Rice, Cookie, Cheats, Chocolate-Covered Strawberries, and Oreo balls on skewers and sent them around with messages that kids could send to each other around in class. We have explored the beautiful country of El Salvador in order to learn more about who our project will impact, and we wanted to share just a few highlights with you. It is also a cool coincidence that the El Salvadorian colors are the same as our school colors. Here we are. Here is where the Uganda team went two years ago. It's pretty far out there. El Salvador has really, is really not too far away, it's really only two hours south of Houston, Texas. It's bordered by Honduras, Guatemala, and the Pacific Ocean. El Salvador is one of the smallest but most populated of the Central American countries. The capital is San Salvador, and the Town of Ataco is in the western mountainous region of the country. It boasts one of the top ten surfing beaches in the world, and I'm pretty sure I'm ready to go today. Here are some pictures of the beautiful place. El Salvador has the largest population and third-largest economy. It's slightly larger than Massachusetts. The area was conquered in the sixteenth century and dubbed the land, the land of our Savior, which is translated to El Salvador. The country gained its independence in eighteen twenty-one. The main export, coffee, was monopolized by a few families. Conflict over resources caused power struggles between parties, and the country experienced civil war from nineteen eighty to nineteen ninety-two. The current president of El Salvador is Mauricio Fuentes, who was formerly a journalist and talk show host. The country has a democratic republic form of government and an eighty-four-member legislative assembly. To show some contrast between the conditions in each country, the average income is far less, with the poverty and infant mortality rates being much higher. One component of this trip that is really exciting us is that we'll actually get to help rebuild the homes ourselves. Team Ataco has forty-four student members, as well as eighteen under members, consisting of parent chaperones, alumni, and community volunteers. It's hard to travel light with over sixty people, so we have created five sub-teams, each with a name, color, and chaperone. We've got the Tortugas, which is the turtles, and the Flores, flowers, which is all ladies. Here are the Cascadas, which are waterfalls, and that's another all-girl team, and the Volcanos team is volcanoes. The Del Sol team is made up of our guides and leaders. It also included our contacts and supporters in El Salvador, such as Carlos Arugo and Mayor Oscar Gomez. FCCLA members will leave on our adventure on June 2nd to the seventeenth of two thousand and eleven. Might I point out that that is only fourteen days away, fourteen! We'll be bused from Fountain Hills to LAX, and then fly by Taka Airlines into Comalapa Airport in the capital city of San Salvador. On the trip, we break into sub-teams and rotate through a lot of different activities, the primary one being the building of these simple family unit pictures here. We were surprised to learn that each home was only fifteen hundred dollars to build. They have a cement floor with a simple wooden frame and a cement board slate that locks together to make the walls. The roof is corrugated metal. We were trained on how to build the homes on a safety procedure, thanks to local contractor Rick Picos. Thanks to him, we plan on having a safe construction site and not look like the Three Stooges. We will also work with the kids at the schools, observe in medical clinics, do projects needed by the town, and attend community and cultural events. We'd also get to learn from the local artisans and craft people and experience the natural wonders and historical sites in El Salvador. Lake Kwatake is half ice-cold, half bubbling hot, perfect temperatures for water sports in the center. I hope Clinton brings a bigger bathing suit than the Speedo in this picture. Besides building houses, we will get the chance to do some tourist adventures. These include ziplining, visiting mine ruins, water sports, working with endangered sea turtles, and much more. Only twenty percent of the ruins in El Salvador have been excavated. We have, we would have a chance to see the ancient history up close. Here are some really amazing pictures of Ataco, an aerial shot here, and it's a colorful and bright, bright place. You can see why we use the House of Ataco for our change banks. Their use of bright colors is very inspiring. Ataco is also very art-oriented. Murals and arts and crafts are an important part of the culture. Many of us look forward to, uh, to meeting and interacting with the children of Ataco.
So I think the last thing we wanted to make sure we mentioned is it wasn't like a cakewalk or anything, it's been hard work, and some of the hiccups along the way was, and again, I can't thank enough the Melendez, Rahill family, because they, they helped us when the, the gas prices changed, our ticket prices changed, and that was tough. And, and they stood in there and they used the relationships they had with their, uh, the vendors in, in Ataco and in El Salvador to make sure that our costs were contained, so we really appreciate that. Um, some changes in TSA passport requirements, um, always the, the concern about global travel and what's going on in our world today. The one classy problem I never thought we would run into is, I went to Uganda with six students, so I thought if I got twenty to sign up, I'd be super happy. Yeah, that, so I kind of exploded a little. So, um, though I'm very happy about it, I also take very seriously my role as a teacher to make sure that each and every one of them are safe and cared for, and, um, so I've lost a few nights' sleep over it, but I know that I'm going to, um, have all the support I need from the parent chaperones, who've, who've literally taken their teams under their wings as the quote-unquote, parents of their teams, um, to make sure that everybody feels like they're part of something versus just a blob of sixty-two, so. Um, the, the tasks and workload have been heavy, no doubt, but in my opinion, that's always worthwhile. That's why I'm in the game in the first place, is to have students learn in the classroom and learn in the world's classroom as well. It's an honor and a privilege to be able to do something like this. And finally, of course, there's no Home Depot in El Salvador, so we have been gathered, they, they have been gathering our supplies and moving them towards the worksite for months now to try and make sure that they're there when we arrive. Uh, again, I want to just express my gratitude for the family down in El Salvador, for Enrique, for Sharon. You don't know what you don't know on a project like this, and so you need somebody to stand in there and tell you what those unknowns are and help you work through them. Um, I'm, I'm thankful to Mayor Oscar, who's going to be our liaison when we're in Ataco, to help mobilize his community for our rotations and shadows to occur. And really, I'm, I'm thankful for a district that supports this type of learning, and I'm really thankful for a town that gives me as a teacher in our school the opportunity to do something of this nature. I don't think a large high school in a large city would have a similar opportunity, I just think it would be more difficult to make something like this happen. So, vayamos, let's go.[1266.23][1266.23](APPLAUSE).
Do you realize that two-thirds of the people who've had the privilege of serving as mayor of this community are in this room tonight in support of this project? I think that's wonderful. I had the privilege fourteen years ago, working with our newspaper publisher, Alan Cookshank, of starting our Sister City program, and to see what it has evolved, and it's just fabulous. Jackie and I will be going down to join the young people for a portion of this time. It will be my sixth trip to El Salvador in the last five years. Thanks to Enrique and his brother, we've had the privilege of visiting virtually every corner of this country. It's a beautiful country. We have taken thousands and thousands and thousands of pictures, I think I have on my computer, over five thousand pictures that we've taken of every corner. We've spent a fairly decent time in the Ataco area, and of course, as Enrique mentioned, I had the honor of going down a couple of years ago to meet with Mayor Oscar Gomez and present him a check, and to my astonishment, I was able to present that, the speech in Spanish. Don't ask me to repeat it, don't ask me to say what I said, but apparently, people were able to understand it. Anyway, these young people are going to see a side of life that I think most of them have never seen. You saw the figures of the poverty rates and the area of income that's down there. Uh, it's a beautiful country. There are some areas that are, are really quite well-off, but like so many of these countries, there is poverty that is, in many cases, heartbreaking, and I know that these young people will come back with a totally different view of life, and I hope that they will come back with a heightened gratitude for the privilege of living in the United States and in Fountain Hills.
Thank you, Mayor.[1397.83][1397.83](APPLAUSE). Welcome, Ms. Kavanaugh.
I'm Lynda Kavanaugh, the Director of Constituent Services for State Representative John Kavanaugh, who could not be here this evening. Uh, he sends his regrets and best wishes to all, especially to our high school students who will be traveling to Ataco for humanitarian work. It is my pleasure to present, on behalf of Arizona Governor Jan Brewer, two certificates of special recognition. One to the Fountain Hills High School Family, Career, and Community Leaders Program, and one to the Fountain Hills Sister Cities Program. Be it hereby known to all that I, Janice K. Brewer, Governor of the State of Arizona, do hereby offer my sincere appreciation to the Fountain Hills Sister Cities Program and Fountain Hills High School Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America Program, having organized a trip which will include over forty Fountain Hills High School students traveling this summer to Ataco, El Salvador, to build housing and provide much-needed services to the community and people of this country. Your valuable service is an essential part of civic responsibility. People and communities will continue to be connected and strengthened through your dedicated efforts and volunteerism. On behalf of the citizens of the State of Arizona, I thank you and commend you for your valuable service. Best wishes and success in all future endeavors, and it's signed, Governor Jan Brewer and Secretary of State, Ken Bennett. Congratulations to all of you.[1526.65][1526.65](APPLAUSE).
Mayor? He landed with the rest of them. Welcome, Mayor Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor Schlum. Mayor Schlum, Vice Mayor Cantino, and council members and guests and friends of, uh, the school district. Uh, my name is Wally Nichols, I was the former mayor of this wonderful town, sat up there with Jay sitting, thinking the same thing Jay is, how long am I gonna talk for? What am I gonna get this program over with? Uh, I was asked to speak by Rick Melendez, uh, a couple of weeks ago, and I said, as long as I had forty-five minutes, I'd be all set.[1576.76][1576.76](LAUGHING). He keeled over, but he's, he's recovered, so I'm only gonna take a couple of minutes. Uh, Sheila and myself have gone to Ataco, down to Ataco and El Salvador four times. Yeah, no, we're very, very, uh, we have very good friends down there, and we hope you meet some of them. When you get down there, please make sure you give our regard to Mayor Oscar Gomez and also to Enrique's brother, Carlos. They're good people, they're wonderful people, they do a lot for you, you know. But, uh, as, as, as Mayor Miles said, the place is gonna open your eyes up, because the poverty is widespread, but the people are wonderful, they have a great spirit. So you'll have a great time with the people there, as long as you, you know, don't judge them, you know, because they, they don't have very much, but they have love. Uh, when I was down there twice, uh, Mayor Gomez asked me to go out to the country with him. Uh, at, both times, I went to two villages that had no electricity, and I was given the honor of turning on the electricity in both of these villages. So can you kids imagine what it'd be like to live in a home that had no electricity? No TV, no way to charge up your iPads and iPods, and, you know, just think of what, I think of how much you use electricity every day. The second time I was down there, the third time I went down there, we went to a village that they did not have running water, and I was given the honor to open up the tap in this one village for the first running water that they've ever had in the history of this one town. Because before, they'd have to walk an hour to two hours with jugs in their shoulders to get, uh, water from a local well, so. But these people, they're wonderful people, and, uh, uh, I, I envy you going down there for this trip. Uh, one thing that happened two years ago is that our son Jay Nichols, Dr. Nichols, uh, is a, who is a PhD marine biologist and one of the world's renowned turtle experts, uh, you know, told us that the, there's a, there is a species of turtle which is almost extinct in the, in the world, it's located in El Salvador. So he went down there, uh, and has helped them for a couple of years to start a ecotourism, uh, uh, business, to help to protect the turtle that's going extinct. The turtle that's going extinct down there is called the hawk-spilled turtle. Now, the hawk-spilled turtle has been hunted many times, many years, for its shell. Have you heard the term tortoise shell? They make hair, hair, uh, hair pieces with tortoise shell and tortoise shell combs, that's what they use the shell from the hawk-spilled turtle for, and that's, uh, they, they, they have almost used up all the hawk-spills that are in the ocean. So he's, he's been working with the, uh, the El Salvadorian government for the last two years, uh, and the project, uh, group Tortuga, Tortuga, and one of the things that are gonna happen to you when you're down there is the people who are in charge of Group Tortuga are gonna take you out to the beaches to see the turtle eggs and to see where the turtles lay their eggs, and, uh, how, what they're doing to improve, uh, the environment by protecting this hawk-spilled turtle. Three years ago, before my son went down there, there were about two million eggs which were laid every year on the beaches, and those two million eggs were sold by the local residents of El Salvador, they were put into the food chain. So, uh, by doing that- So by doing that, it became impossible for them to increase the number of adult hawksbill turtles. So he's been working with them to try to, to stop that process. And what's happened the last two years, 3 million turtles have been released into the ocean instead of being sold. So I mean, that's a big step forward for the environmentalists of this world to help save the hawksbill turtle. So I hope you have, you know, you learned something when you go to the Hawksbill Conservatory, learn a little bit about the endangered species of the hawksbill. And like I say, it's, he's not going to be there. I'm sorry to say that. He has something else. He's going to be in Indonesia on another project. He won't be there, but there'll be people there who will be able to take care of you and explain the whole process of what happens with the hawksbill turtle program in El Salvador. So with that, we send you off with our, you know, our great feelings, and we wish we were going down there, but, like I said, we've been there four times, and we just needed a break. So you say hello to Mayor Gomez for us and to Oscar, I mean, and to Carlos for us. Thank you very much.
We are very fortunate, and it is great that Mayor Miles mentioned that we've got so many of our former mayors here, and they're still engaged in the community, doing a lot, contributing a lot and caring for youth as well as other folks in our community and those outside of our community. I want to wish, I know the council wishes you well, and I want to read just a quick proclamation from our town council to, for the efforts going on here. Whereas Team Ataco will be traveling to the town of Fountain Hills Sister City at Ataco, El Salvador in June, and whereas Team Ataco consists of 44 Fountain Hills High School students and their teacher Claire McWilliams and other chaperones, and whereas Team Ataco's mission will be to build houses in Ataco where over 400 homes were lost due to recent floods. And whereas Team Ataco's trip to El Salvador has been organized and supported by a time and generosity of members of, number of individuals and organizations, including Fountain Hills High School, teacher Claire McWilliams, Fountain Hills Sister Cities Organization honorary council Enrique Melendez, as well as many other current and former elected officials and residents of the town of Fountain Hills. Now for their, now therefore I J T Schlum, do hereby proclaim and appreciate the appreciation and support of the town council and the town citizens for Team Ataco's humanitarian mission, and hereby recognize all who have contributed toward making the trip a success. And witness hereof, I have heretofore set my hand and cause to be affixed the official seal of town of Fountain Hills, Maricopa County, Arizona, this 19th day of May 2011. So I'll bring this down, and also want to point out, they have received numerous letters as well from representatives in the legislature and also our Don Stapler Board of Supervisors and others. And there's a lot behind you, but I think we're just very impressed with our young people here in Fountain Hills. And of course, Fountain Hills Unified School District is amazing. There are so many benefits to being part of a smaller school district, and this is just an example of one of them. And the empowering people that are a part of the school district to allow you folks to do, to blow us away and raise the bar. I just want to lift you guys up, and I know our town council is already very proud of our youth here in Fountain Hills, and you're giving us a cause to pause to be even more impressed, and want to ask you to please give a hug to Oscar Gomez, the mayor down there, and wish him well. He's a great mayor. And thank the President of El Salvador and all the other folks down there that are helping to make things happen and more, and really want to lift up our honorary council Enrique Melendez and Pam for being part of our community and just doing so much to affect good results in your, in your former country, El Salvador, Rick, and by doing so, enriching the lives of our children here in Fountain Hills. We wish you the best, and I'll hand this over to you, the proclamation and some letters. Godspeed and God bless you guys, and have a great trip.
We'll get started here. As we do, I mentioned, I've got the VFW Buddy Poppy on my lapel here. Just purchased the first one, and they'll go on sale on Memorial Day weekend at various locations around town for $1. Buy a poppy and, of course, supports the veterans in many, many different areas around our country through the VFW's work, and thank you, thank them for, for making that happen. Move on now to call to the public. Any speaker cards? Call to the public?
No, sir.
Thank you. Move on now to our consent agenda. I'll read the consent agenda. First item is consideration of approving the town council meeting minutes from May 5, 2011. And this last, second last item is consideration of approving Resolution 2011-18, abandoning whatever rights, title, or interest the town has in certain portions of the public utility and drainage movements located at either side of the rear property lines of 11033 North Pinto Drive. May I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Great. And a second. Roll call, please.
Aye.
Mayor Schlum?
Aye.
Councilmember Legere?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cantino?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Elke?
Aye.
Mayor 70?
Great. Thank you very much. And on to the regular agenda. Our first item, item number three, is update by Chris Coyle, Allied Waste General Manager, relating to the implementation of town-wide solid waste services. Welcome, Mr. Coyle.
Good evening. Thank you.
You don't have any music?
Nope, no music. Sorry. I don't think I'm going to be as entertaining as the group in front of us. But good evening. My name is Chris Coyle. I am the general manager for Allied Waste Services of Phoenix, a republic services company. I want to thank the mayor and the town council members for allowing me to provide this implementation update tonight. My team and I are honored to have the opportunity to provide this essential and cost-saving service to the town of Fountain Hills. As for the service, I want to assure the council that the customers of Fountain Hills will receive excellent customer service and excellent customer quality as the program rolls out officially July 1. Customers will receive the same quality of curbside service they have come to enjoy. The one change they will notice is that all the customers will be picked up by a blue Allied Waste truck. And I want to point out that they will receive this quality service for a fixed, low price. By using only one hauler and by encouraging recycling, the basic service is only $11.44 per month, and that rate will not be adjusted for three years. This is a great value to the customers of Fountain Hills, as we are all seeing prices increase from fuel to groceries to clothing. Also, each month, the customers actively participate in the Recycle Bank Rewards program. They will receive an additional $5 to $10 in valuable offers to use either in the local community or with national retailers. Our customer service team is led by our operations manager, Kevin Flanagan, our customer service manager, Terry Jeanette, and our office manager, Heather Moran. I'm sure many of the people here tonight have spoken to one of them over the phone or at one of the events that they attended. In the introductory letter, we published Kevin Flanagan's cellphone so customers could call him directly and have their questions answered or their concerns addressed. Who else would do that? That's how committed we are to providing excellent customer service. We have hired three additional customer service reps specifically to support the Fountain Hills customers. They were specifically trained on the Fountain Hills program, and our phone system has a queue dedicated to the Fountain Hills customers. This ensures that Fountain Hills customers receive the highest quality of service. In order to provide the highest quality of service, on March 1, we allowed new and existing customers in Fountain Hills to sign up under the new rate structure as provided by the contract. This allowed for the customers to take advantage of the new lower rates early. It also allowed the residents the flexibility in signing up to avoid any billing issues with their previous hauler since collection fees are billed on a quarterly basis. To date, 4,000 customers are currently being billed the new lower rate. They have already begun to save and will continue to enjoy that rate for the next three years. I want to remind our current customers to please call in and select a service option before, before July 1 to ensure a smooth transition. Our drivers have been trained to ensure that the town of Fountain Hills is a litter-free zone on collection days. We have heard concerns about the javelina getting into the cans. Our drivers have been trained that if they see a can that's knocked over, get out of the truck, pick it up, clean it up, dump that can, and put it back in its original position. If this does become a regular occurrence, our driver will notify Kevin, and Kevin will work with the customer to find a solution. And we have researched this issue, and we have solutions for these problem areas if they arise. And remember, cart service has been around in Fountain Hills for many years, and the service has been successful in keeping the javelina out of the carts. Currently, the town is not aware of any consistent problem areas, but we will immediately address the problem if it arises. We also have an electronic note system that tracks all issues. This system will be regularly reviewed to ensure that Fountain Hills customers are receiving the highest quality of service. We have also had questions about vacation holds and cart placement. The answer to this, to these questions is very simple. Part-time residents can put their, can put their service on vacation hold one time each year for free. All they have to do is either email or call in with their start and end dates of their vacation, and we'll put it on hold for a maximum of, up to six months for no charge once each year. Also, carts set out is easy. Put your carts where you've always put your carts. All we ask is that if you're setting out two carts, please place them a couple feet apart, as you see here on this slide. This will ensure that we can service both cans without issue. If there is an issue, the customer will be contacted by a friendly supervisor to see if an alternative location would be suitable to the resident to ensure they receive quality service. Also, did you know the trucks that pick up the trash burn over 4.5 gallons an hour? The price of a gallon of diesel has risen over $1.20 since Allied Waste bid for these services. I want to assure you that this will have no impact on rates. As I said earlier, rates are fixed for three full years under this new agreement until 2014. We have attended the following events within the community. We were there to answer questions, sign up customers, and hand out trinkets, all in support of the community. To date, Terry, our customer service manager, has attended over two dozen HOA board meetings or executive sessions within the town of Fountain Hills. The boards are very grateful to Terry for being there to answer their questions and alleviate their concerns. All the carts needed for Fountain Hills will be received by Allied Waste by the end of May. Existing customers will receive their carts the first half of June, and new customers will receive their carts the second half of June. Existing customers who have picked their option for service will not need to do anything to receive their new cart. New customers just need to sign up via email or call in, and we will schedule their delivery date. I am pleased to report to the council that 87% of the customers that have signed up chose one time a week trash and one time a week recycling. That means 87% understand the value of recycling, 87% want less truck traffic, 87% agree with the vision of council to be environmentally responsible and earth-friendly, and 87% wanted the lowest rate that is most cost-effective and the most economical option. In conclusion, my team and I are excited and honored to have the opportunity to serve the community of Fountain Hills. At this time, I would be glad to answer any questions the council may have. Thank you for inviting me to speak tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Coyle.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll see if we have any speaker, if some folks in the public may have some questions and comments. Do we have any speaker cards?
Yes, Mayor, we have two speaker cards. Sean Dow and then Linda Bardot.
Welcome, Mr. Dow. How are you?
Good. Thank you, Mayor, council. Every day I still get emails from Fountain Hills residents complaining about switching over to the single trash hauler. Now that the notices have gone out in the mail, it seems to have picked up even more. I try to direct them to your email addresses, but they say they don't get any responses from you. We've had several things that have happened over the course of the last four or five months. We've had, we've spent a little time in court over this. We've had some recalls filed over this. We've got four council members who are threatening, who have been threatened to have their seats taken away from them. I would suggest that you put a hold on this until, instead of just 2,000 residents in Fountain Hills switching their trash, you give everybody an opportunity to hear and listen. We've had these meetings canceled several times. We've had residents who have come here waiting to have their voices heard, and they just haven't. I would recommend that the council do something about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dow.
Linda Bardot?
Evening, Ms. Bardot.
Good evening, councilmembers. Good evening, Mayor. I just have a couple of points about some of the items that are in, the items that Allied sent out to folks in, sorry, I'm tongue-tied. The information Allied sent to people at home and what the council passed sometimes have two different things, and a couple of things I noticed, whoops. One of them is, we don't have trash pickup on Friday, and I wanted to bring that up because somebody told me it's because of Green Fridays, which is great. I mean, I guess the town council wants to have the buildings shut down and all of that, but businesses are open on Fridays, school buses run on Fridays. I think it'd be a good idea to have our trash picked up on Friday. If people want the two pickups one day in between, trash pickup just isn't enough. I'm just afraid we're going to wind up with stinky Sundays if we only do the one trash a week. The other thing I wanted to ask was, I noticed that the recycling portion of the contract, if you elect for the recyclables, there's a lot of money to be made in the recycling of these goods. And it seems, I'm not a lawyer, but I tried to fare it my way through it. It's probably why you guys get paid so much. It seems to me that there's a lot of money to be made per ton on the recyclables, and I don't understand why the town council hasn't elected to use the recyclable money for the town, especially in lieu of the fact that one of the items tonight is the budget. They're talking about raising our taxes 58% on all telecoms, water, everything. So you would think that the recyclable money, which is coming from our own plastic containers and so forth, would be retained by the town and not, you know, sent off to Allied and in turn have them give us, I don't know, but you referred to the items that you were giving the But you referred to the items that you were giving the town as certificates or something to use online or in businesses. I think the town would be better off to use that money towards the budget. We have a lot of businesses that have closed up, our revenues are down, and it just seems a wiser use of the recyclable money. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bardot. All right, Mr. Coyle, we probably have a few questions for you.
Sure.
I'll first open up the council. Any questions, comments, now that we have you here, that you'd like, Councilmember Barocky?
Good evening, Mr. Coyle. Thank you for being out here today.
Good evening. Thank you.
As a couple of the residents have already kind of commented on, there have been a number of questions that we feel that, and we certainly try and push them on to you to make sure that you get the correct information to them because you're in the best possible position to provide that. There's been some questions, as you heard one of Ms. Bardot speak to, that we don't have pickups on Friday. Can you understand that correct?
Correct.
Okay. The question is, has there been any discussion? Now, as I understand, please correct me if I'm wrong, if you wanted two trash pickups a week on separate days, you have the option of Monday, Wednesday, or Tuesday, Thursday?
That is correct.
Okay. Now with that, would you agree, Mr. Coyle, that it doesn't make a lot of sense to have a day in between as far as pickups are concerned?
I would.
Yeah, so if you have pickup on Monday, you're probably not going to generate enough trash to have another pickup on Wednesday, right?
Correct.
All right. So perhaps 87% of the people that have signed up for one trash pickup a week and one recycling a week recognize, you know, perhaps the futility of having two pickups a week on a day apart. Would you agree with that?
I would agree with that.
What has, as far as, we didn't see, if I may, Mayor, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to monopolize here. As far as the costs are concerned, I didn't hear you talk too much about the cost as far as, it's 1144 on one trash pickup a week, one recycling. Can you expand a little bit if I wanted two trash, one recycling, just two, I know two trash is 1144 without the recycling option? Can you speak to some other possible scenarios, you know, including the greening, you know, what the additional cost would be?
Yes, I can. The basic service is 1144. That's one trash can with one recycle can each serviced once a week. An additional trash can or an additional day, if I'm correct, is an additional $5 per month. And then the green waste cart is $15 additional per month if you wish to do that. However, if you don't generate a whole lot of green waste and you don't need a whole separate can, the green waste material can go in your trash can. That's been one of the questions we've had also, what to do with that. So if the customer doesn't generate enough, it can go in their trash can.
Since you mentioned that, because I've had a few of those calls, the green waste, since green is associated with, you know, environmental and potential recycling.
Yes.
Green and recycling are not really the same, correct?
Correct.
What would a green container be used for?
Green containers would be used for organics such as your grass clippings, any yard or tree clippings. All they need to do, all that needs to be done is they need to be cut short enough so you can close the lid.
Okay. Councilmember Alki, did you have?
Well, I'll turn it over to the council.
Okay.
I may have some follow-up.
Appreciate it. So the green, just so I know, the green waste is an additional large can that is just for the yard waste, but if they, it may not be needed if they have room in their trash can.
Correct.
Or if they want to do a second can, it's that extra $5 for trash.
Correct.
Which could be utilized for green waste, I assume, as well, correct?
All correct, Mayor.
Okay. Council, I've got a couple more questions. Councilmember Hanson?
Thank you. When we look at the numbers that you provided us, thank you, saying that 87% of the people have gone with the, just the one recycle and one trash a week, but since only 2,200 people have signed up, that I don't think that's real indicative of what might be going on. I think probably a lot of people are waiting till the last minute because they're happy with their current care, their current provider, and their current level of service. So I don't think we can really go by that yet. It was my understanding that, and I believe it was the town manager, that told me that there were efforts to come up with a way that there could be two days in between. And where are we with that possibility?
We've explored every option, and we've looked at this in depth, many different ways. And based on the way the RFP was put out, with the goals of reducing truck traffic, increasing recycling, and providing for the lowest possible cost for the residents, providing that service two days apart does not meet those goals.
I don't, I for one did not understand that last November. I don't think it really came out and was clear that that was going to be the case. And if it was in the RFP, then obviously, shame on me, I missed it. But I think that's unfortunate that we can't come up with some solution because I think that's an important thing to a lot of people.
And there were some, I mean, there were some things, there were some addendums that were done that clarified, I think it was originally one day of each period, wasn't it, Andrew, and then expanded to a second, an option for a second trash pickup. So I think you're right. There's not a great deal of clarity on the second pickup, but sticking with the RFP is where, with some of those constraints is where we're at today. I think obviously a second trash pickup one day apart is not what most people would like to have if they feel they really will need two trash pickups. Obviously, they'll still have the option to have a second trash pickup with now five days between one side and only one day between on the other, which would still, I'm sure you'll still have some people sign up for that because they'll have that increased waste, but some will be concerned with primarily, I think, the smell of any waste that might be in a trash bag with or without a bag. Obviously, it should have a bag, but I know most, there are many, many people that are probably going to the one and one and finding it's not really a big issue. But if another trash container is needed, five extra dollars is not tremendous amount. I think the feedback after a little while might not be that robust as far as people not happy with that. But it isn't what I think what most of us were quite expecting, probably in the public as well.
Mayor, just one more thing. Can we clarify why Friday was left out? Because I've heard two different ways. I've heard that the town wanted nothing on Friday, and I heard that we wouldn't get this low of a price if there was pickups on Friday. And if we could get clarity on that.
Andrew, who do you think's the best to get clarity on that? Because I have heard that as well. That because town hall is closed on Fridays, you can't do delivery. You know, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it was, it had everything to do with the fact that town hall is closed on Friday, but not because of the fact that town hall wasn't available for Allied, but the folks at town hall weren't available for folks who may call in with a complaint about their garbage service on that day. The original desire was to reduce the number of truck days to four was the primary concern, and the four days chosen were the days that there'd be employees at town hall to field calls if they weren't, if the calls came to us rather than to Allied.
But I thought the whole purpose was that the calls were going to go to Allied. That was one of the things that...
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Hanson, that's exactly right. But as we all know, that even when we have calls going where they're supposed to go, people still call town hall looking for services the town isn't responsible for, and we forward those calls on all the time.
I'll go over to Councilmember Dickey.
Mayor, thank you. And Councilman Brown was on this with me, too. We were, you know, with a lot of the original discussion, and as far as my impression was, it was definitely because we wanted to keep the trucks off the road five days a week. Because we were talking, we had them six, and we said, well, let's go four days a week. I don't really even, in my mind, I didn't consider the fact that town hall was closed really as a factor. It totally had to do with the trucks and the roads and the noise and all those other things that we've talked about. Mayor, if I may, the idea of the recycle bank, which is for people to be able to get some value for shopping locally, and also the low rate, seems to me, Dennis, you can correct me, or Andrew, that that was the discussion on why the town didn't want to be making money on it. It was because we wanted to get the lowest rate possible. So the fact that it goes into the recycle bank and it goes to Allied was all in the factoring of how we got the 1144. And I, and once recycle bank is in there, I think that people will see a better value for us, too. But I think, you know, the idea of the town making money was always a two-edged sword because, you know, you get accused of trying to make money on something, and then you get, you know, say, well, gee, you're not making money on it. So I, these conversations were all had, but this is how we got with the rate, and this is how we got with the recycle bank. The other thing I wanted to say, because you mentioned, Mayor, about bagging trash, it reminded me that these laws have not changed. So you have to bag your trash. You've always had to. If you didn't do it before, you were supposed to, and you're supposed to now, and if you don't do it now, it'll just be, you know, it's just whatever you choose to do. But bagging trash, I think, and I will disagree a little bit with you, sir, on the five-day difference, because if the real problem isn't the amount of trash, but that people didn't like it getting ripe, I think five days is better than seven days. But I would be remiss to not point out that we did a study, 21 communities all around us, including Mesa, Scottsdale. 18 of them have single hauler, and 12 of them don't even have an option for another trash pickup. So basically, you're looking at Scottsdale, Mesa, Gilbert, Glendale, Chandler, Phoenix, for any amount of money. So I think that it seems to be working okay for those cities with the one trash and the one recycle. So I have high hopes that that will work with us. But we do give that option that helps a little bit with the two days, and it's $5. And in places like Avondale and other cities that do give you the opportunity for two pickups, it's anywhere from $6. That was one of them, and the other two were $20 more. So I just wanted to kind of put this into that, you know, so that you see yourself as a community in this larger area and see what they're all doing and realize that it is working pretty well for those other cities.
Councilmember Alki.
What I think is important to point out, too, is that although we may be getting 1144 a month now, and understandably, Allied Waste is in the business of doing business and to turn a profit, and I would imagine in three years when our contract is up, that, you know, with the cost of gas going up or diesel going up, that I can expect that we're probably not going to get 1144 again. I'm certainly not trying to negotiate with you now.
Understood.
Unless you want to sign a contract.
No, but I think I can put you at ease. In the contract, the maximum increase that can go on the rate is 5%. So in three years, the maximum can go up is 5%, and then the year after, there could possibly be another maximum 5%. So at the end of this, five years, the maximum rate would be 1261.
I understand. I understand. We're just talking long-term because if you look at the other surrounding cities and towns, they're not paying 1144 for one trash, one pickup. I mean, some, if we compare us to Phoenix or Scottsdale, they're paying substantially more.
Correct.
So we're looking big picture, we're not looking short-term.
Yeah.
If I may ask just a few questions of Mr. Coyle. Mr. Coyle, I just want to run kind of a scenario here. Councilmember Hanson and I, as we up on the dais, are neighbors. We live on the same street.
Yep.
If I want a Monday, Wednesday pickup for trash, and then Monday, Wednesday pickup for trash, and then I have a recycling as well, when would my recyclables be picked up?
It'd be picked up on Monday.
On Monday, okay.
Yep, first service of the week. So if you're Tuesday, Thursday customer, it would be Tuesday.
Okay. Now, if Councilmember Hanson said, you know, Tuesday, Thursday works better for me, I'd rather have pickup on those days, does she have that option?
No, she does not. We're going to break the town up into four zones.
Okay.
And those four zones will be Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and then within those four zones, on Monday, we'll travel into the Wednesday zone to get those twice-a-week customers.
Okay.
So we'll have it segmented out like that. That's part of the efficiencies needed to provide that rate of 1144.
Okay, so some zones will only have the option of a Tuesday, Thursday, and others will have only the option of a Monday, Wednesday.
Correct.
As far as trash pickup.
Correct.
Okay. When are the greens picked up? Let's say in the same scenario, if I have a Monday, Wednesday pickup, my recyclable plastic, aluminum, paper, those are picked up on Monday. When are the green recyclables picked up?
They would also be picked up on Monday.
All right. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hanson.
What about when holidays fall on a Monday?
Everything will be pushed back just one day. So the Monday customers will get serviced on Tuesday, Tuesday customers on Wednesday, and then Thursday, and then on to Friday.
But if someone had a Monday, Wednesday pickup?
They'd be going on Tuesday, Thursday then, just for that week, and then the following week, they'd go back to their Monday, Wednesday pickup.
What about Tuesday, Thursday?
Tuesday, Thursday would then go to Wednesday, Friday.
The following Wednesday, Friday?
The holiday?
No, if the holiday is on a Monday, a Tuesday customer would go, then Wednesday and Friday for that week, and then the following week, everything would go back to normal.
You said Friday.
Wait. Mayor?
Yeah?
If the holiday's on a Monday, wouldn't the Tuesday, Thursdays just be the same? Why would they have to change?
Everything gets pushed back a day. Everything just gets pushed back a day, and it says that in the contract that we're allowed to do that for that holiday week only.
So then there would be service on Fridays.
There would be. There will be service.
Only during the four or five holidays as specified.
I see.
That's in the contract.
But we don't want pickup on Friday, and now we're going to have pickup on Friday.
I think that seems to be what happens today, currently. Hopefully, that happens. Councilmember Cantino?
Thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
Do you pick up now on Fridays?
Yes, we do.
Why would you want to change it?
Why would I want to change it?
Why would Allied want to change it?
Our routing schedule is set as per the RFP requested.
If we request you to pick up on Fridays, what changes that? I know the town manager talked to Councilwoman Hanson and myself and said, that is possible for you to pick up on Friday, and that's what you're supposed to work on.
I apologize, Vice Mayor. I'm not sure I understand the question.
We're talking about Monday, Thursday, Tuesday, Friday pickups. That's what the town manager said you were going to work on to have, because there was nothing really in concrete about they could pick up on Friday. You could, there's no concrete saying you could not, because trucks are in this town picking up garbage all of Friday.
That's under the current situation, which the contract doesn't...
No, all the dumpsters and everything will be picked up on Friday.
These are the names.
As far as...
Businesses and everything.
Businesses, yeah.
That's right. So you will have trucks in here on Friday.
Correct, for the commercial business.
So why can't you pick up on the public's? In other words, what I'm saying is, you're just screwing us.
Councilmember Cantino? I would appreciate you being a little more respectful and let the...
I understand that, but there's a lot of citizens that are really upset with not having two pickups a week. We're paying for two pickups, but have you had your garbage sit in your garage for a whole week?
Yes, sir, every week.
With dog manure and everything else in it?
Yes, sir, every week. But if you have another question, the RFP, I believe...
Well, I think what I'm saying is, and I got a right to say it.
Sure.
Is I think that what's happened is you manipulated this thing along with the town attorney when he proposed this, and he drew up this proposal.
Councilmember Cantino, we are councilmembers. We have the input into the agreement.
Okay, my input is that what's happening now isn't right, and I think what we've got to do is, you've got to square it away because the citizens of this town will get screwed.
Councilmember Cantino, I would appreciate if you have a little more respect for staff and our guests here.
I think I said it properly.
You're calling names, and that's not appropriate. I appreciate it.
I don't, that's just the normal names.
Councilmember Cantino, you can share your opinions and...
I did share it.
We want to hear it, but let's just try to do it with some more respect and...
I did.
Decorum. No, sir, you did not. I'd appreciate it if you would going forward.
Well, I did it in my own way.
I understand that, and I want to hear that. We all want to hear. We want to have a good discussion. We also want to handle ourselves respectfully so that we have an effective communication and we're not all on our heels or get upset. I don't think that's effective. Thank you.
I haven't got upset yet.
Thank goodness. Mr. Coyle, on Fri-, can you speak? I think what the question was, if we can get to the answer, on Fridays, why are you not picking up on Fridays except on the four holidays a year, potentially, or however many holidays there are in the contract?
To respond to the RFP properly, we were not allowed to service on Fridays except for the holiday weeks. Those are the only days, the only weeks we can run on Fridays during a holiday week.
I think I understand that. Do we all, the rest of the council, understand what was just said? Good. Any other questions or comments related to implementation of the Allied Waste contract starting in July? I have a couple more. You talked about the green pickup. The other question I've had, you also addressed a lot, was around where to place the cans.
had, you also addressed a lot, was around where to place the cans. I didn't have too many Havelina calls.
Okay, good.
But I'm sure you guys get those.
Good, we did, yes.
Where to place the cans, I think what I heard you say was the simplest. Put it where you've been placing it.
Correct.
Because there's folks that read through the ordinances, and then through the contract, and then through what you sent out, and there seems to be some discrepancies, probably at least to the layperson, as to where they should put it under the law.
Right.
You know?
Correct.
But to cut through things, your relationship is with, is going to be with the customers out there, and if you're telling them, "Just place it where it's been working with Allied Waste," which you already serve a large amount of the community already, or with some other hauler, you imagine that's going to be just fine?
Correct. If another hauler's able to service it, and if we have been servicing it, the can's in the right spot. So just simply put it where you've always put it. If there is an issue, again, we'll send somebody by, or make a phone call, and work with the customer on a one, on a case-by-case basis, to find a solution that's, that works for both parties.
Okay. The other thing, and I think Councilmember Hanson or Alki brought it up, I think, who brought up the optional pricing? Councilmember Alki, you asked about the additional options. What other options are you hearing that people are considering doing, and what about other pickups, if there are things that people are asking me, bulk waste, or special days, and those types of things? What are the other options that people are asking about or are ordering?
Yeah, at the moment, they're still in my mind, but I know we have four quarterly cleanups. Oh, excuse me. There's an on-call bulky item cleanup that is performed, it's on-call. We'll be doing it on a Wednesday, once a month, and then...
Is that the only, that's the only one I was thinking of?
Yeah, it's the bulky item pickup, on-call. All they have to do is call in, and we'll schedule it.
Okay, good. So the green waste, that's one or two trash pickups, and the recycling pickup is...
Correct.
And this bulk on-call pickup. And there are also questions about, some folks have trouble getting sometimes their can down to the curb, or those types of things. How are those going to work?
Yeah, all they need to do is call in, and we'll go through a very simple process to where if they say they can't get their can to the curb, we'll provide what we call a valet service, and as long as it's in an accessible place where we don't have to enter the property, we'll be glad to bring that can to the curb, dump it, and replace it.
Okay.
So that would work for anybody, the elderly, or possibly anybody with a physical ailment.
And any other, Councilmember else?
Just a couple. Mr. Coyle, there's been some questions have been posed to me about the enforcement. Just give you a couple scenarios. Somebody's not putting their trash can out properly. It's, the lid's open. They're not bagging their trash. They're not putting the shredded paper in a clear plastic bag. I know some of these are not your rules or rules that are passed down by the state. I understand that. But there were some questions as to, well, who's going to be enforcing this? Can you walk me through, what is the process if there's somebody that perhaps their can is not in the condition that it should be? What's going to happen? What do your drivers do?
The drivers are going to do whatever they can to service the can, first and foremost. We want to take care of the customers on a weekly basis. He'll make a note on his route sheet, or if it's a more immediate problem, again, he'll call Kevin, but we'll, again, contact the customer. It's just a friendly conversation of, we'll provide educational material. Here's what we saw. This doesn't comply with the program, so if you could do it this way, that'd be great, and we'll continue to work with that customer, just to make sure that we get the services just right.
So the first is a phone call?
It'd be a phone call and/or a visit from the supervisor.
Okay. And the second time, what happens?
It'd be the same thing.
How about the third?
Same thing.
At what point do you involve the town or...
Probably after the third one, we would talk to the town and say, "Is there any way you can help us?" And I don't know the town's position, but again, I think they would do the same thing that we did. Try to work with the customer to get them to comply, and, you know, give them every opportunity to do so.
One last question, Mayor, for you. There was some discussion, and I apologize, I don't remember. I don't know if it was your CEO or the gentleman that came in when we were discussing this. We had a conversation about Recycle Bank, and there were some comments made, and I think I proposed the question, that in lieu of receiving a gift card or rebate for whatever recyclables I may put at my curb, that I can designate those to go to a nonprofit of my choice, perhaps here in town. Are you familiar with that, or can you provide me any information on that?
Yes, that is part of the Recycle Bank program, and Recycle Bank will be managing that. So the customers will actively report their recycling. They'll earn points, and then, when they log into that website, they can choose what they want to do with those points. Either redeem them for value in the local community, or they can designate them to a charitable cause.
Okay. The town, and I'm sorry, I need to say one more question. The town provides some recyclables, and will be providing those to Allied Waste or through Recycle Bank as well. Is that correct?
You said the town?
The town.
Will be providing recyclables?
Well, at some point, you're going to be doing the recycling, or, excuse me, the trash for the town as well, correct?
Correct. We have to service several locations for the town per the contract?
Okay. And as far as recycling, is there a provision in place for the recycling of town newspaper, cardboard, whatever it may be?
I don't recall off the top of my head.
I think there's commercial problems impacting, and I don't know if there's an option for residential carts, or...
Okay, it sounds like there is options for commercial recycling, as well as using the residential carts for recycling, maybe for special events or items like that. As far as, do those recycle points go to the town? I do not know that at this time, but I'd be glad to get back to you, Councilmember.
If you could, I'd appreciate it.
I would be glad to.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And related to that, Councilmember Alki, as we talked about, there are many local organizations that do fundraising and encourage folks to bring recycling items, clothing, I mean, you name it, to various locations throughout our community, and that's still obviously an option, and probably encouraged to continue to support your local organizations around town. But if you do choose to recycle through Allied Waste, they have a partner, Recycle Bank, that will also get you some credits, earnings towards coupons, and other things that you can utilize around the community, and as you mentioned, on national retailers. But there's still options for folks to utilize the local magazine or newspaper recycling places where local organizations, churches, and others raise some funds.
Correct, yeah. We support those programs, and anything we can do to help, we'd be glad to.
Well, I just, if there are any other questions? Councilmember Dickey?
Oh, not for Mr. Coyle. I think I would like to make a comment.
Okay, well, Mr. Coyle, so far, you mentioned there are 4,000 people that are existing or new customers that have started utilizing, or maybe existing customers that have moved over to the new pricing, and they come on to your slides. It sounds like there is probably is typical where communities go in this direction, that there'll be a large number coming on at the very end. How do you suspect that'll occur?
Yeah, that's what we expect. We expect at the beginning of June to have a high email inbounds, and getting a lot of mail, the receipts of the mailers that we put out for them to sign up, as well as we do expect a high volume of phone calls. So a lot of customers have already put that information in. We're holding on to it, and we're slowly getting that data into the system. So the numbers are, you know, literally changing every day. But we do expect a large amount of activity in June, and we're prepared for it. Again, we brought on three additional customer service reps. We added another data entry person just this week, so we're prepared. We're ready to go.
And also in July, there are many of our great neighbors and residents that are not here.
Correct.
So those folks obviously won't be getting a bill or having service started. How will that happen?
No, they, yeah, no, they won't. A lot of, a good portion of them have called in and say, "Hey, we're not coming back till October, November, whatever." So we've already set up their account. We've set up a delivery date, and their service will turn on automatically as they set it up. Customers who haven't set it up, they don't need to worry about it. Just once they get back into town, give us a call, and we'll establish service then for them.
All right, so they don't need to do anything until they get back, or...
Correct.
Call you in advance and let you know the date?
Nope.
All right, and then there's also a large number of homeowners associations in Fountain Hills.
Correct.
How do residents know when they should be calling Allied?
That's been, we've been working with the HOA managers and the property management companies to do that. It depends on, the situations can be different. They can be individually billed currently, or they could be just a single bill. So we're working through all those. We have a list of the HOAs, so we're making sure that we're ticking them off our list. When do their contracts expire? If they don't have to come over now, or if they are expired or open, we're reaching out to them to make sure what services they need and when they're ready to switch over.
But there are some HOAs that are still in a contract with another provider that will continue until a certain date, and then they'll be contacting...
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct.
Well, I just wanted to, in closing, I want to just thank Allied for taking good care of our customers, our citizens, your customers, and that's what we expect. We expect tremendous customer care. We don't want to hear complaints about things. There's a lot of reason why the town didn't start a municipal trash hauling company. We really believe in the company working with the residents and us staying out of the way as much as possible. And also, I think, related to the cost, we want, we don't, we weren't looking to make any money. We're not looking to make any money here. We're looking to obviously affect a lot of those other quality of life issues. So minimizing the truck traffic by you guys being attentive and smart to routing is very much appreciated. Keep that going. Keep the limited number of trucks out of neighborhoods. I know in quadrants, if you're just going to be in one, two, three, or four, you're going to be there two days a week, period, and just your blue trucks two days a week. So that's good to hear. As far as ongoing questions or concerns from residents, how do they get a hold of you?
They can get a hold of us via email at, excuse me, our website is phoenix disposal.com, and they can contact us that way, or they can call us at our 800 number, or they can refer back to the introductory brochure, which has six, seven ways to get a hold of us, which also includes Kevin Flanagan's cell phone number.
Mayor. Councilmember Alki?
Thank you. Can you, can you give that cell phone number, because a lot of folks watch this and don't necessarily read the material?
Sure. I would be glad to. Kevin's cell phone number?
And I think it'd be great if we can make this available on the website if we're not already, and probably Channel 11.
Sure. Kevin Flanagan's cell phone number is 602-714-4066, and our customer service line is 602-237-2078.
Mr. Kevin has 28 minutes.
He does. He's got the best plan out there.
I'm just waiting for it to ring.
Probably ringing right now.
Yep.
Waiting for it to ring right now. All right. Thank you, Mr. Coyle.
Again, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you, council members. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item is consideration of Resolution 2011-19, adopting the maximum amount for the Town of Fountain Hills fiscal year 2011-12 tentative action to publish said documents in accordance with state law. Julie?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. With the council's permission, I would like to postpone this item until after the council's had a chance to discuss the budget again on Monday and Wednesday at the special sessions, in the event that the council has any changes, so that we don't fix in that maximum right now. So with the council's permission, I'd like to postpone that until the Wednesday meeting.
And what's our timeline, Julie, for when do we have to get this number out there?
Mr. Mayor, just a clarification. We're actually, the continuance will be to the Monday meeting, that you'll have an opportunity to adopt the resolution that night if you want. If the council decides at the end of that meeting, that the Wednesday night meeting is also required, we'll move it off to Wednesday then. But it's double-agendized for both meetings, so that if people want to hear discussion on it, they should come Monday.
Okay, but we're, we have, time-wise, we're okay till Wednesday at least?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, that's good. And can you give us a little insight as to what's going on? Why are we looking to continue this? Obviously, we have added additional meetings that are going to be like our last meeting, open to the public and encouraging dialogue, but why are we looking to move this, this action? Councilmember Hanson?
Actually, I was going to move to table it, simply because when you look at the resolution, it goes into some fairly specific things. Not real specific, but like it'll say the admin budget is this, and it goes through that way. And since we haven't really had any time to talk about it, some of those numbers might change. So it seemed kind of out, kind of strange to be publishing that document for two weeks if those numbers aren't going to be accurate.
Mayor, members of the council, when we put this on the agenda item, we were, we were believing that we had to get all of this done so we could adopt the tax levy by June the 19th, 16th or 19th, whatever the second meeting is in June. But we can't adopt the tax levy until August anyway, because we have to post it for 60 days. So we have up until the 19th of June to adopt the budget, and so this gives us plenty of time.
Okay, good. So we're just taking as much time as we can, not going to the very edge, hopefully, but as much time as we can to talk about the budget in public and have a good dialogue, because I know some other good things are coming out of executive budget. So I think the council will be pleased with some of those options, too.
Mr. Mayor, one clarification on the schedule. Because there's a requirement for two, two once-a-week publications of the tentative budget, the resolutions before you tonight, that two-week gap is going to guide when you will need to adopt the tentative budget resolution. If that doesn't happen until the last meeting, the regular meeting in June, we'll need to put another special meeting at the very end of June to hold the public hearing that's required. But that's really the only timing issue you have. The gap between the hearing and the adoption of a levy is going to happen naturally with the break over July.
Okay, well, let's get a placeholder out there for June, just in case, on council's calendars. All right, so is it a continuance or a table that we're looking for here?
Julie pulled it.
Julie pulled it.
Pulled it.
We pulled it, so we don't even need to worry. But we do encourage public to come back on that item on the 23rd, which will be Monday, the 23rd of May, where we'll have the entire budget before us to discuss. All right, so that item's been pulled by staff, moved to Monday, May 23rd. Next item, member five, discussion of possible direction to staff regarding the potential to have the Fountain Hill Sanitary District assume the ongoing responsibility for the maintenance of the effluent water quality in Fountain Park Lake, and to potentially draft an agreement between the town and the district regarding the terms and conditions. Mark?
Mayor Schlum, Vice Mayor Cantino, members of the council. If you recall back in December, the sanitation district was here and provided you information that they had gotten from a consultant. The jux of the report was some suggestions that were made, some recommendations, and some costs associated with doing some further improvement to the water quality in Fountain Park Lake. At that meeting, you may recall that there was a discussion about the potential for forming a committee made up of representatives from the sanitation, sanitary district, as well as representative from the town council. Since that meeting, we've done that, as I've shared with you in the weekly reports, representing the town are myself, Paul Mood as a development director, and councilmember Cassie Hansen. We also met with representatives from the sanitation district, sanitary district, excuse me, I've been doing that all day. That was represented by board member Bruce Hansen, also the staff members, as well as Ron Huber with the sanitation district, and as I said, some of his staff as well. So we met twice at this most recent meeting. There was a recommendation that came forward from the sanitary district, saying that they were interested in the possible assumption of the responsibilities for the quality of the lake water, and that would that be something that the town would be amenable to. We, as a staff, decided that that was something that we really frankly needed direction from you on. Our thought was, at the time, that if there was agreement, that that was at least an issue that needed to be explored. We would like the opportunity to continue to work with them, to see if we can come up along with the town attorney with an agreement for your consideration, as well as their board. Their board met on Tuesday night. Joining me this evening is board member Bruce Hansen, who is going to come up shortly after I'm finished and talk about their representative roles and their vote that they took on Tuesday at their board meeting, as well as Ron Huber from the sanitation district would sit in on those discussions as well. So with that, I would stand for any questions that you have, or turn it over to Mr. Hansen. Obviously, there's a lot of details to be worked out, and as the term sometimes says, it devils in the details, so we've got some work to do if that's the direction that the council chooses us to go in.
Thank you, Mark. Yeah, I think I'd prefer to hear from Mr. Hansen, maybe Mr. Huber, and then open up the questions for whomever.
Sure.
Is it Vice Chair Hansen?
It's Vice Chair Hansen.
Vice Chair Hansen of the sanitary district. Welcome, and thank you for coming.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. I'm Bruce Hansen. I'm vice chairman of the sanitary district, and we did have our meeting Tuesday night, and we agreed on a five-to-nothing vote that we would like to pursue this project. We started this some months ago, because the lake is an integral part of our effluent disposal system, very important part of it. So the water we furnish to the lake, once we put it in, is good water. It's great water. AAA water exceeds state standards. But once it gets in the lake and it stays there for a little while, not so good anymore. So we need to do something. So we ran, worked with the consultants, you guys have worked with Rick Amalfi, and we came up with some ideas, and that was in that presentation which we gave you in December that you, that you saw. Since then, we have met with... Since then, we have met with your group, and it has come to the point where, well, do we really want to proceed with this, or is the town council really amiable to the idea that the sanitary district will be responsible for the quality of the lake and the maintenance of, maintenance of the lake? Now, there's a, as Mark said, the devil's in the details, those have to be worked out, we're not asking for any details tonight, we're only asking for your blessing that you would direct your staff to work with our staff, and we would proceed with this, try to come up with an IGA that we could both agree to, of what each governing board body's responsibilities are. So, this is what we're after tonight, we don't, we don't have any of the details, we have a plan, I think it's a good plan, it's gonna take some time, it's done in steps, we can't do it all at once, we know that, but we do have a good plan, and we think it'll work, and we think it will make the lake smell, not smell, maybe I should say, will make the smell away from the lake, and then we can proceed further, there's other things that would be really nice to do, but those are down the road, we'll talk about those, but I guess tonight, we're asking you that if you agree with us, that this is a good idea, that's great, we'll proceed if you do, if you don't think it's a good idea, we'll stop. So, Ron Huber, our general manager is here, I'm here, between the two of us, we can probably answer any questions you have, so if you have any questions, fire away.
Good, yeah, let's hear from Mr. Huber, and then probably throw some questions at you, Mr. Huber, I know you have a-
I think, I said all Mr. Huber was gonna say, so-
Anything else?
He'd be happy to come up, if I can't answer the question, he will.
Good, thank you, Mr. Hansen, Vice Chair Hansen, yeah, we'll open it up, and first, let me see any one from the public here on this item, but, did you have your hand up, Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Cantino?
I want to thank you for coming forward on this, I think that this has been needed for a long time, and I think with the two entities working together, that I think this would be a great idea for the sanitary district to take over.
I'm glad you brought that up, I meant to, this is a cooperative effort between the town and the district, we're working together to try to solve this problem, this is not a one-man show, this is both of us working together to try to solve a problem.
And Councilmember Brown, I think it was that next?
Thank you, Mayor, I too would like to say, it's certainly nice to see the sanitary district and the town possibly working together as a one on the, on the smell of the water, especially in the summertime, which I am pleased to live across from the lake, so I will testify it isn't pleasant, and I have looked at the pros and cons of what the proposal is, and the ifs and what-ifs as to the proposal, and I, I see more advantages than disadvantages, so I too will be supporting this.
Yeah, Councilmember Dickey?
Thank you, Mayor, I know you said the devil's in the details, but do you think if it's gonna have a budgetary, like especially for a capital budgetary impact, is there a way for us to sort of, I guess it's not fair to say what you think it's gonna be, but some of the things we were talking about with our budget has to do with maybe using capital money to do some different things and that kind of stuff, and so is there a way to know any kind of timeframe, or any kind of, anything that would be important when we're discussing the budget?
The, my idea on this, and I think it's pretty much a district's idea, there will not, the town, we won't ask the town for any capital money, now, that doesn't mean we won't ask you for any money, I don't mean that, but I don't think we're gonna ask you for any capital money, but that's part of the details that will work out, and we will bring all that back to you, so you'll, you'll see what it is, but that's the plan right now. The first thing we're, the first thing we're going to do is, is have a comprehensive lake management plan drawn up, like what do you do in the lake, if you see an algae bloom in August, what do you do? We, right now, we, we really don't know, if you see an algae bloom in December, it's gonna be different than when you see one in August, so these things have to be worked out, we have to have a manual, just like you've got a manual to operate any other thing, if you get a piece of equipment, you get a manual with it on how to operate it, we need a manual on how to operate the lake, that's our first, that will be our first step, so, and that is certainly not an expensive step, but it needs to be done, and you guys have probably picked an excellent guy to work with, it's Rick Amalfi, he's a good guy, we have worked with him, and probably will continue to work with him, because he's got, you know, a background, a background here, and he's very, very competent, very good guy. So, right now, Councilmember Dickey, I don't know, but I don't feel we're gonna come to you and ask you for a million dollars.
And I just wanted, I know that you'll be paying attention, obviously, your wife, Cassie, will be paying attention as we speak the budget, because I wouldn't want to do something, I think this is a, it's been, I probably shouldn't say this, but it seems like a priority, and so I just want to make sure we have that in mind as we go down with what we're doing with-
This will not impact your budget this year, that I can, I think I can say most definitely, this will not impact your budget this year.
Councilmember Hanson?
Just real quickly, and Mark could probably clarify this, but I know staff has been talking about expending some dollars on, expanding on and improving the aeration system in the lake, and in the, our last two meetings, it's kind of like, you know, that's, that would probably be throwing money at something that really wouldn't be very, very effective, so part of this process will be coming up with an alternative that will actually save that money, it wouldn't be just towards the aeration system, and it could be better used towards the ultimate goal.
I don't know if I'm correct, but I think in your budget, and I know your budget's not approved yet, so I don't know if it is today there, I think you have $100,000 to put in aeration equipment in the lake, we would recommend that you do not do this, and maybe we could take part of that money, not the whole $100,000 by any means, to help with some other things, and the impact to your budget there would be the kind you like, because it would be reducing it, so if, and that's a possi, that's a possibility.
Any other questions, comments? Councilmember Loggia?
Mr. Hansen, thank you for your presentation and your knowledge in this particular area, just, just a couple of questions, mostly around clarification, you speak about water management, some thinking about lake quality, does the scope of your work or responsibility entail the fountain, or the operation of the fountain, because they're intimately, they're associated with one another, so as you folks have talked about your project, is it just exclusively the lake, or does it consist of the fountain, the management of the fountain, the operation or the maintenance of the fountain, or is that yet to be determined?
That's kind of yet to be determined, there's one line of thought that says, we'll do the lake, you do the fountain, I don't know that I like that line of thought, but it's gonna be a joint operation whichever, whichever way we go. I would like to see the lake and the fountain handled as one thing, because they do work together, the aeration from the fountain is, is important, we're going to try to help that a lot, but you guys, you don't want to lose complete control, when I say you don't want, if you want to run the fountain for a special event, you don't want somebody else to be in control and say, oh no, you can't do that, we don't want to do that, we don't want to get to that point, so it may end up that the town is responsible for the fountain, in so fact, is when you run it and when you don't, but we would have to work together, because again, the aeration is important, it's, it's not a fix for everything, but it does, certainly does help, so we have not really determined that yet, that will be part of, when we do the IGA, that'll be part of what goes into that.
I would anticipate that as being part of the discussion, because they are like, you know, it's like attached to the hip, I mean, one-
It is.
They're an integral part of each other in terms of the engineering and the maintenance-
Kind of like ham and eggs.
Yeah, there you go. One other question really, and it's just going back to our joint meeting, one of the recommendations was coloration, and we talked about that a lot, and that seemed like there was a lot of merit to that, and I noticed that is not part of, of the solution, could you kind of address that, why that's off the table?
Yes, well, it is gonna be part of the solution, because the chemicals are a part of the solution, and we've done a little investigation into this, into the coloration, so that we can control the algae and so on, and we have found that there are a number of manufacturers of this, and, you know, kind of like when you go buy a prescription, you can get the, the brand name, or you can get something else, well, something else might be just as good and a whole lot cheaper, and we've found some of those, so that will be part, part of the discussion when we do the lake management, as I said, if you see an algae bloom, what do we do? Well, maybe we use chemicals on it at that point, depends on what we come up with, but we have looked into this, and we have found some, some ways that are a lot more, more easy, be easier, and now, see, I probably said something I shouldn't.
Mr. Huber, welcome, how are you?
I'm fine, Mr. Mayor, council members, the issue of the colorant would become an integral part of the comprehensive lake management plan, so any of the chemical additions, whether it's an algicide, or whether it's chlorination, whether it's the sun shade or aqua shade that was talked about in the December presentation, all of that would be, become a comprehensive part of that comprehensive lake maintenance management plan, and in talking to your lake management consultant, before anything is done, the most important thing is developing that comprehensive lake maintenance management plan, once you have that, then you're probably there 30%.
Very good, thank, thank you, gentlemen, and Vice Chair, thank you for answering my questions, I appreciate it.
Councilor Rowkey?
Vice Chairman Hansen, Mr. Huber, greatly appreciate you both being here tonight in the sanitary district approaching the town with this, this cooperative effort to take care of the lake, the lake issue, and certainly wholeheartedly support it, and look forward to hearing more details about it, thank you.
And I just want to say, you guys have been great partners for years already, you know, and-
We hope, we hope we can make a, a real improvement in this area, I think we can.
And I know we just executed the IGA about a year ago to share a, a staff resource, so maybe we've already got a little of the groundwork done, but obviously, it's a little more sensitive, although we love our staff person, the fountain, this is our fountain, this is the fountain.
That's right, that's the centerpiece for the town, the park is the centerpiece for the town.
Exactly, but you guys have been-
If we can make it better, it's good for all of us.
And the sanitary district's been a part of the success of the fountain for years, and the sprinkling of the, the grass, and the benefits that you guys have brought to the community has been, to the town, and to the community has been great for years, so I expect, I don't see any reason why not to go through this unless staff or others that are involved in this didn't think we'd get to the finish line at some point, and it'd be a futile effort, I don't hear that as a concern.
Well, I think our two meetings with your staff have gone extremely well, everybody has had good input, and I just, I'm very impressed with how well they have gone.
Good, and I believe we've got a recommendation for staff to move forward, so they wanted to obviously have our discussion, so I don't have any other questions, other than I appreciate the collaboration and this approach to leveraging knowledge, resources, and abilities, so thank you very much, Vice Chair. Anything else on this, make a motion, someone, Councilmember Hansen?
Okay, motion to authorize the town staff and town council liaison to work with the sanitary district and their board member to draft an agreement for consideration of both the sanitary district board and town council outlining the potential terms of an arrangement, under which the sanitary district would assume the ongoing responsibility for managing the effluent water quality of Fountain Park Lake.
Excellent, and a second, good, thank you, any other discussion?
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Rowkey?
Just one, one question, we're directing then to draft an agreement, are we not gonna have additional discussion before we're putting something in writing, just in the interest of, you know, who's paying the legal fees, I guess is my question, if we're putting, if we're putting an agreement together, I mean, if we're putting something like that together, or should we have further discussion and kind of massage this a little more, have a committee meeting or something like that?
Well, we have the committee, and at least my thoughts were, we would put together an IGA, certainly, I'm sure Andrew would be involved in this, Mr. Maguire, I mean, and our attorney, but then we would bring that back, both to the sanitary district board of directors, and to the town council, we would need approval from both before we could proceed with it, so that's what I thought would happen.
Mayor, it would probably be a good time to have another joint meeting to just discuss that document, that-
That's a good idea, probably cover-
At that time, it'll take a little while to put this together, it won't happen tomorrow, but it will, we'll make it happen soon.
Okay, good, thank you, any other questions, comments, you've got a motion, a second, all in favor, and it keeps saying aye? Aye, opposed?
Mayor, 7-0.
Thank you, Mark, thank you, sanitary district. All right, next item is a report, we'll have one report on items six through eight, and separate motions on each item, first item's consideration of resolution 2011-16, declaring as a public record that certain document filed with the town clerk and entitled the planned area development Crestview at Fountain Hills. Bob?
Thank you, Mayor, bring this up. This is an application under chapter 23 of the zoning ordinance for the Crestview at Fountain Hills Planned Area Development, or PAD, the applicant is the town, the proposal is to re-adopt the terms of the recently expired original pre-annexation development agreement for the Crestview and Summit parcels as a PAD zoning classification. Subject property is located off the north side of Shea Boulevard, adjacent to the Scottsdale Town Line, consists of two parcels, main parcel is the Summit Single Family Subdivision, and, I'm sorry, the Crestview Single Family Subdivision, and the Summit Condominium Subdivision. On the left is the plan of annexation showing both Crestview and Summit parcels, the upper right shows the Crestview plat as approved, and the lower right shows the Summit plat, the condominium plat. The lots in Crestview and the condo plats in the Summit are all platted, the PAD recognizes those plats, that the roads are all in, and that the utilities are also all in. The PAD is a re-adoption of the original conditions of approval, which have been used within the development up to the agreement's expiration in February 2009, no new regulations are proposed. The PAD is more restrictive in some instances, the same in some instances, and less restrictive in others, it allows the Summit condos to develop according to the M1 zoning district regulations, this is effectively no different than if the Summit was approved today, and this is also the way that the condominium plat and the improvement plans were approved. There are some differences between the development rules within the Crestview Single Family Subdivision and today's standards, without going through every small difference, I'll try to hit the main points. The PAD has some bulk and coverage controls for the Crestview subdivision, which are different from today's standards, the PAD allows a maximum lot coverage of 15%, today's standards would allow 20%, the PAD maximum driveway slope is 10, is 20%, today's standard would have only allowed 18%. The PAD minimum building separation on a single lot is 15 feet, today's standards would have only allowed 6 feet, or would have, you know, only required 6 feet. In the PAD, cut-fill waivers for driveways are granted, subject to retaining walls with a maximum height of 8 feet, with an, with an average of 4 feet, and a maximum total combination of 12 feet. Today's standard retaining wall height for driveways is based on the slope of a lot, with a maximum height of 10 feet, and requires separate walls with separation equal to the, to the height of the walls, there are no limits on, on the maximum total height, however, the maximum visible cut or fill is 10 feet. PAD retaining wall heights on lots allows maximum 18 feet high with a maximum average of 11 feet, today's standards would allow a maximum of 10 feet high with an average of 7 feet. The PAD allows 100% lot grading on slopes under 15%, and if they're over 15%, they're allowed 15% lot grading. Today's standards, you would be allowed 100% lot grading on slopes less than 10%, and then it goes in 10% increments up to only a 10% allowance at 30% slopes or greater. And the PAD driveway width would allow a maximum of 14 feet, whereas today's standards would have allowed a 24-foot wide driveway. The proposed Crestview at Fountain Hills PAD contains only the regulations of the original pre-annexation development agreement, the same regulations that have been previously in effect in this, in these developments, no new regulations have been added, staff recommends that the council approve the Crestview Fountain Hills PAD as presented, thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Any a button from the public on this item?
Yes.
On number six, council, questions on the resolution? I think it was clear, thank you very much, the one question on your presentation is the maximum 18-foot height on the wall and 11-foot average for retaining wall, expand on what that would, how that would work out?
Typically, the ground will undulate, and you'll, the wall will be straight, so there's gonna be variations in the height of a retaining wall, it can be up to 18 feet in portions of it, but it has to average out 11 feet maximum.
Okay, that makes sense, it's just been a while since we've talked construction stuff here, you know? It's just been a while since we've talked construction stuff here, you know? Councilmember Hanson.
And, Bob, just to reiterate then, so approving this will just allow development to continue as it has for the first ten years of the develop, the original development agreement. So it'll be consistent with what's been built up there so far?
Right. We didn't want to, if we require the current ordinance, in a number of cases, some of the lots are going to become virtually unbuildable. Um, so we wanted to allow them to develop in the same standards they've been developing in.
So Crestview will continue to look like Crestview?
Hopefully.
Anyone else, councilmembers? All right, I'll look for a motion on this item. I don't have the language in front of me. Councilmember Brown.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance eleven dash oh-two, creating the Crestview-
Councilmember, that's the resolution we're on right now, if I remember.
Is that not, um-
We have to declare it a public resolution first.
Yeah, there's a, we need a motion on the resolution, is that correct? Andrew, are we comfortable with, um, move to adopt resolution two thousand eleven dash sixteen? Okay. I'll make that motion.
Considered, yes, thank you.
And, Councilmember Brown, second?
Second.
All right. Any other questions, discussion on that item? All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed?
Mayor, seven zero.
Thank you. Go now into a public hearing on the ordinance eleven oh-two, eleven dash oh-two, adopting the planned area development Crestview at Fountain Hills by reference, providing for the separability and proving for penalties. Do we have any speaker cards on this item?
Yes, sir.
Um, we'll close the public hearing. Move on to item eight, consideration of ordinance eleven dash oh-two as just presented. Could I get a motion?
I'll move.
All right, thank you. Bob, anything further on the ordinance?
No, Mayor.
Part of it? All right. Any questions, comments from council on ordinance eleven dash oh-two? All right. All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed?
Mayor, seven zero.
Thank you very much. Don't go far, Bob. Item nine, uh, public hearing of a special use permit for AT&amp;T Wireless Communications to allow the installation of a sixty-five-foot-tall cellular monopalm at eleven-eight oh-seven North Saguaro Boulevard, which is located in the C3 zoning district case SU two thousand ten dash zero four. Bob?
Thank you, Mayor.
And your report will cover item ten as well?
Subject property is on the north side of Saguaro Boulevard, is currently occupied by the Alamo Bar and Southwest Shutters. These plans, the upper left, shows the proposed monopalm location directly behind. It also shows three additional twenty-foot palms, which will be located over here. The ground equipment will be located in an enclosure here, surrounded by an eight-foot wall. The additional driveway area in the back will be paved with the tech parking right here for servicing the, the equipment. The upper right, uh, is just a blow-up of that area, showing a little more detail within the enclosure. In the bottom picture is a perspective view of the monopalm, the equipment enclosure, and the other three palm trees. In order to grant the special use permit, certain criteria must be met. The tower height, C3 allows forty feet, or a waiver must be granted within the SUP. Proposal is for a sixty-five-foot stealth, stealth-designed tower. Staff believes that the stealth design as a monopalm, as well as the additional palm trees, adequately addresses this criteria. Fall-down distance, uh, the ordinance would require a hundred percent fall-down distance. In this case, that's sixty-five feet. Or if that's not available, a waiver within the SUP. Uh, the proposal is for a forty-three-foot distance. And staff believes this could potentially cause off-site damage if the tower were to fall. The proximity to residential uses, the ordinance calls for a three-hundred-foot separation from residential uses, or a waiver within the special use permit. Staff believes that the tower location on the opposite side of Saguaro Boulevard from the residential uses will have no detrimental effect on those residential properties. Uh, the nature of adjacent uses is industrial. The ordinance calls for no detrimental effects on the adjacent uses. Uh, the existing building is three feet from the tower. The alley is forty-three feet away. Staff believes that an accident could create a situation that is detrimental to the nearby property or in the alley. Surrounding topography, the property is completely developed. Staff believes that the topography will not present any problems with the placement or use of the tower. Blending with surrounding foliage, there is no landscaping currently in the immediate vicinity, and staff believes that the additional three palm trees will somewhat help with mitigate the visual impacts. In the tower design, the ordinance encourages stealth designs whenever possible, and the monopalm is obviously a stealth design. Staff believes that's appropriate. Site access, the ordinance calls for good and easy access whenever possible, and the tower would be located directly off a paved alley and would have excellent access. In the availability of other locations, the ordinance would call for co-location whenever possible. The applicant states there are no possibilities for co-location in the immediate vicinity. This is a picture of the existing front of the building, showing the existing palm tree that's right out front. This is what it would theoretically look like with the addition of the monopalm and the additional small palm trees, uh, as well. Going to go back and forth here a second, just. This is a view from the rear. This is, uh, behind by the street yard, looking at the back across the alley. This is how it would look from the alley side. Uh, while staff did note some reservations regarding some potential problems, should an accident occur, the overall staff recommendation is that council find that the criteria for granting the special use permit have been adequately addressed and approve the special use permit with the appropriate waivers as noted for an AT&amp;T monopalm, equipment enclosure, and additional three palm trees as presented and subject to the stipulations in the staff report. That concludes my presentation, and the applicant's representative is also here if you have questions for them.
All right, we're in the public hearing. Do we have any speaker cards on this item?
Yes, sir.
All right, we'll close the public hearing, go on to item ten, consideration of special use permit for AT&amp;T Wireless Communications as just presented. Council, any questions? Councilmember Brownkey.
Thank you. Perfect. I was just going to ask you to go to that picture. What you're depicting there, uh, in, in the photo there, we should also add, are we adding an eight-foot wall? Is it around the palm? Did I understand that correctly?
Uh, no, uh, Councilman, the eight-foot wall is actually around the equipment in the rear of the building. That's the ground mounted equipment. It's, and this picture is probably best seen, here's the, here's the large palm, here are the three smaller palms, and the equipment enclosure is here. It's on the ground.
Was there any discussion with the businesses immediately in that area? Did you have any conversation, or staff have any conversation with the businesses in the area regarding this possibility?
Only the property owners who, who signed the application, yes, they're, they're in favor.
One, one other question. Were, were there other options available for a shorter palm? I just have some reservations about what we're looking at here, because it's right along Saguaro and, uh, obviously well-traveled area of town, and it just seems to stick out like a, like a green thumb, even though it's a palm, I understand that, but, uh, just kind of sticks out.
The, the one thing about that stretch of Saguaro Boulevard is you'll see this single palm in this picture, but there are a number of other palm trees about that same height. Uh, this one will be slightly shorter than those, a little thicker in the trunk. Um, and the idea by adding the other three palms in the back is hopefully they'll grow to eventually be closer to that size as well. Um, yeah, it's a tower.
Are we looking at what you have there in the picture? Are we looking at what the tower is, or is this just an actual palm tree?
This is the real palm tree, this is the tower.
Okay.
And then those are the new, real palm trees.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions, council? Councilor LaJee?
Bob, uh, thanks for your presentation. Um, in terms of alternate sites, was the Desert Vista Park considered at all, which seems to be just a stone's throw from, from this location, and I know we have some rather large light poles there that can accommodate cell, um-
There is actually a large cell tower in the park right now. Uh, I had conversations with Parks and Rec staff and they, um, I guess, given the problems they've had with that pole, they don't want any more in the park.
I see. Okay, thank you. That was, uh, Councilmember Brownkey.
Actually, I have a question. What were the problems with that pole?
Uh, mainly having to deal with, uh, the maintenance of the pole, and the company tends to come in, do maintenance, tear up things, and leave. They're not very neat.
Thank you. More particular about our parks, which is a good thing. Councilmember Dickey?
Mayor, this is probably an obvious question, but is this going to be improving service for people that live in Fountain Hills?
If you're an AT&amp;T customer, like the mayor.
Oh, so that counts.
Thank you.
Now I have to comment. I was a customer, but due to the poor coverage. I am in my area, I'm sure it's great for everybody else. Anyway, um, certainly wireless connectivity is important, is very important. That's why there aren't, I mean, ten years ago, there would have been twenty people here upset about this, but it's, it's a, just what happens now in life, but there, the, we need this connectivity, but, uh, times do change. And I think I've asked this on another, uh, tower or pole before, and I, like, uh, the councilmember mentioned it before, I'd love to have this in Desert Vista Park instead, where we already have towers, but I do know that that is a little, quite a bit lower as well, so I'm sure it has something to do with the engineering there. But, um, this, the alley, it's, it's closer to the alley, isn't it? Isn't it, Bob, as far as the location of the, the pole?
This is, yes, this is, this is behind the Alamo Bar, uh, next to the alley.
So it's on the Alamo property?
Yes, it is. It's actually adjacent to the building, but it's, it's on the, the backside.
It's on the backside, which is probably a little bit lower than on the front side, I would, a little lower than Saguaro to some extent, so it's, it's still sixty-five feet, but it's not that much lower. Okay. So what, that's an area where, where there are obviously vehicles going through the alley and parking in the back. What, with this now being, um, if it falls, could potentially hit another building or another property, what's the liability there? What's our, how do we address that? I mean, that's an Andrew question.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I don't believe in approving a CUPU or even conditioned upon, you know, the things in the CUP, I don't think that the town incurs any liability for the fall of a tower. Um, the town's regulations were designed to make sure that towers fall in safe areas. As we get more and more towers in amongst things, there are likely to be next structures and probably unavoidable that you have them nearby things, but we've been permitting these things in various communities now for the entire sixteen years I've been in practice, and I haven't had one of them fall yet, so I'm knocking wood that that won't happen now.
This one's, if, there's not a fence around this one, I'm, there's no bollards around it or anything like that?
There are some around the base of the palm, just to keep the vehicles from hitting it.
Oh, good. Okay, that, that was my concern, because this is an area where there will be traffic, not like the, the park, where you're going to have a kid with a soccer ball, it's not going to probably take it out, but a big truck going down the alley might-
Well, no, this is not close enough to the alley to be hit by anybody. This is against the building. The only people who might run into it are somebody who's directly behind parking, uh, against the building.
It is behind a saloon.
Yeah. So there are bollards around the, the palm tree. All right, and the, um, I'm not a fan of this, because, I mean, it doesn't look too bad in that picture, but you can sure tell these things aren't real, uh, because I've seen a number of them around the valley. They're certainly way better than a, a new pole just going up in the air. And I'm happy that SRP now with their poles are starting to make them more available to carriers also, because why not just use what we already have? I know this is an area, personally, I know this is an area that AT&amp;T has some coverage problems in, so, and I know they're, you know, a carrier that a lot of folks utilize, so, um, this will help with, with what's important in today's day and age, so I'm in favor of going forward with it. But I would like to see, and I know other communities are looking at different solutions, which might, uh, utilize lower, but more, uh, lower, um, elevations of improvements or poles, but more of them, I'd like us to make sure we're considering other options with our carriers in town, so that we have smart, the smartest solutions around, and of course, that can deliver the latest and greatest services and wherever possible co-location, so that we can leverage one tower for more than one provider. Any other questions for staff on this item? Councilmember LaJee?
Um, you obviously didn't consider a faux cactus, uh, because that would be a sixty-five-foot faux cactus, correct? I mean, that would be a freak of nature, I imagine.
I think the largest, uh, Saguaro that we've had was about forty feet.
Well, just think, we have one of the largest fountains, why not have one of the largest, uh, cactus and, and bring one more tourist, we could anyhow, probably bring more business to the Alamo as well.
If, if that's the pleasure of the council, I'll be glad to tell them to do that.
That was just kind of on the light side. This then would become the first, um, palm in town that has, um, cell, monopole.
This is the second one you've approved, it'd be the first one if they build it, to be built. You, remember, you approved one behind the bus barn, uh, about a year ago?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
But that never went up.
That's true. Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I believe we have a cacti on Eagle Mountain.
We have about five down by Eagle Mountain.
Right.
Yeah, those look terrific, and they're much lower.
It's not sixty-five. But I think what we're talking about is the height of the reception.
Yeah. Good. Councilmember Dickey?
Mayor, move to approve the special use permits as outlined in the applicant's narrative and described in the staff report, subject to the stipulations contained in the staff report.
And second, good. Any other questions, dial-in, public? Nope. All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed?
Mayor, seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. All right. Item eleven, consideration of authorized town manager to approve change order C two thousand eleven dash one twenty-five dot one with cactus asphalt in an amount not to exceed eighteen thousand dollars. Paul, how are you?
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
He's very patient.
Here's Nathan. All right, Mayor and Council, I'll actually be covering the, uh, the three change orders in, in one presentation.
Right.
Um, currently, the town, uh, we, no, excuse me. Uh, we do pavement maintenance to seven different zones throughout the town of Fountain Hills, uh, once each year. Um, currently, we are working in zone five this fiscal year. Um, that is shown on the screen, it's bound by Palisades, um, Sun Ridge, and Sierra Madre. Um, you approved, uh, contracts, uh, for zone five in April, and the streets shown, all the streets, all the public streets will be getting, getting crack seal, where they seal the cracks that are quarter inch or greater. Um, the, the roads shown in red are the residential streets, they will be getting the tire rubber modified surface seal. Uh, remember, that's like the, the liquid asphalt to keep the oils fresh. And the, the collector streets, um, Sun Ridge, Sierra Madre, and, um, what's the other street? Desert Canyon will be getting the slurry seal. Uh, we'll also come in and restripe any striping that we, that we cover over. Um, council approved the contract, previous contracts as shown, um, we have four different, we have three different contractors. Um, cactus asphalt is doing the crack seal and TRMSS. Um, Southwest Slurry is doing the slurry seal, and Pavement Markings Incorporated is doing the markings. Um, as shown, those, those four, four contracts total three hundred ninety-six thousand dollars. They are written as a not-to-exceed amount. If I gave you the actual totals of the contracts, um, they are three hundred fifty-three thousand three hundred ninety-four dollars and fifty-six cents. We have about a ten, low over a ten percent buffer in there as a not-to-exceed amount. Um, when the contractors put these materials down, um, except for the pavement markings, all the other ones are, are by weight. Um, if you're familiar, when, when a contractor pours concrete for a municipal project, um, the driver gives a ticket showing how many yards of concrete they are pouring. So when these contractors will be giving our inspector in the field their, their tickets of how much weight that they have with them and they're putting down. So we will actually track the amount of weight that they put down. Now, there's approximately three hundred and ten thousand square yards of roadway surface in this area, and it was calculated based on, on aerial mapping. So I need a little, little bit of room if that, that number wasn't calculated properly. So I need a little, little bit of room if that, that number wasn't calculated properly. In the past, last year, Zone Four was done last year, and that was actually based on the actual amount. The contractor gives us a unit price, and we estimate the, the number of yards. As you remember, there was a lot of concrete curbs that, that were broken and replaced. Previously, when they hit that dollar amount, they just stopped wherever they were. So those curbs were removed and not replaced, because the money ran out, and then also the, the frontage road on Palisades was not, was not sealed either. So I had to take some of the budget from this year and finish the, the concrete curbs in the fall, and then if we have money left over, which we anticipate, we want to go back and finish off that, that frontage road on Palisades as well. So the, the Fountain Hill Sanitary District, as you're all aware, recently, earlier this year, they completed their, their pipeline project, pipeline and sewer associated with their ASR well number five, mainly up the Avenue La Montana and El Lago. And you can see the, the trench path that, that they left. Per MEG standards, they are, they are required, the contractor doing the work, or the entity doing the work, is required to slurry seal basically the half of the road that they put their trench in. So the area in yellow is what the sanitary district would have technically been responsible for, and what we could hold them to do. We could either choose to have them resurface the portion of the road that they are responsible for, which doesn't make a lot of sense, because as you see, you would have half the road, half the road done, and the other half not. So the, the blue portion would be what we're, we would like to do on behalf of the town, partnering with the sanitary district. They have agreed to pay the town for the portion of work they would have been responsible for. We spoke to the different contractors, the, the crack seal, slurry seal, and the pavement markings, and they will extend their unit prices from the other contract to come do the downtown work. Now, the contracts that we got for Zone Five, those were based off of other municipal contracts, one A.D.O.C. contract and a Penalt County contract. So what we did is we piggyback, piggybacked off of much larger contracts. The street superintendent and I actually probably looked at ten different municipal contracts, state and county contracts, so we found the best possible price out there. As an example, the slurry seal in Zone Five is nine hundred tons of, or, yes, nine hundred tons of material. We were able to get the unit price off of a Scottsdale contract that was bid before oil prices escalated, and was done for nine thousand tons of aggregate. So we're getting the benefit of having the contracts being publicly bid before oil prices rode, rose, and with much larger quantities, giving us better unit prices. So what we're proposing to do, this just shows, this slide shows a breakdown of the, of the three, three change orders. Crack seal is eighteen thousand dollars, the slurry seal is sixty-eight thousand dollars, and the pavement markings is sixteen thousand dollars. Again, these ones have about a five percent buffer in them. The actual, I'm sorry, about a ten percent buffer in it. The, the actual dollar amount would be ninety-one thousand six hundred and forty-four dollars and thirty-six cents. Again, we will, we'll be collecting the, the tickets from the contractor to make sure that we are only getting billed for what they actually put down on the streets. The sanitary district's portion of the, of the downtown area is roughly thirty-four thousand dollars, with the town's portion roughly sixty-eight thousand dollars. The total project is, is just under four hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars for Zone Five and the downtown. The town's portion of that is four hundred sixty-four thousand dollars, with the sanitary district's portion approximately thirty-four thousand dollars. Again, the, the town's budget for payment management this year was roughly five hundred twenty thousand dollars, and we had to use about twenty thousand dollars of it to repair the curbs in, in Zone Four from last year that weren't completed. Again, it's, it's a great opportunity to partner with the sanitary district, and once we're, once we're completed, La Montana, El Lago, and the avenue on both sides will, will have a fresh surface on it. And staff is recommending approval, and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Paul. Everyone from the public, I guess, any of these items, at least now. All right, council, any questions for staff? Councilmember Laje, reaching for the mic.
Really, thank you, Mayor. Just, just a comment, Paul, and I think you alluded to this, and I think it's important for the public to know that, as you stated, we had close to five hundred and twenty thousand dollars budgeted for this in this fiscal year, and with the initial phase, plus the change order, we're still coming in well within budget, and there's a surplus of about fifty-one thousand dollars in terms of the bud, the, what was budgeted for it. So I think, I think that's an important point, and I appreciate the fact that the sanitary district is, is sharing the cost too, so I think I would agree with you. This is, this is the time to strike, the price is right, and the opportunity is there, and this is something I, I can support. Thank you.
Councilmember Brawki?
Paul, just one question. Know that as the, the work that was done by the sanitary district came down El Lago, it went across an alleyway in the direction of gun site, and perhaps you just had it covered up by your alley picture that you had, or the description there. Is anything going to be done along that alleyway as well?
Mayor, Councilmember Brawki, the alleyway will not be done. When they, when they dug their trench, they basically pretty much replaced most of the alley. The, I didn't mention it, but the other option is the sanitary district can pay the town the funds, they're going to do it anyway, but the town, two years ago, two, three years ago, put off resurfacing these roads, because they knew the sanitary district project was coming. So it's, this Zone Two, which is the downtown area, is not scheduled until two thousand fourteen. So if we didn't do this now, we would be putting it off probably until two thousand fourteen.
Councilmember Hanson?
Paul, when would the work be scheduled to be done?
Mayor, Councilmember Hanson, again, it's the, the contractors in Zone Five have extended their unit prices, so once the crack sealing is done in Zone Five, the contractor would move to the downtown area. They started this week. They estimated about a three-week duration of their, their work. They're actually a little bit ahead of schedule, so we would get the, we'd probably see the crack seal done in the downtown area in about, about three weeks. The slurry seal contractor is committed to other jobs, so they weren't going to start Zone Five until probably the third week in June. So once they're done there, they have about a two-week project there, then they would roll into this. So we'd probably, you'd probably see the slurry seal in the downtown area being done either right before the Fourth of July or right after the Fourth of July, and we can, we can work with the community services staff to, to coordinate it between any events. We also talked to the slurry seal contractor about possibly doing the downtown work at night. There are, there are some issues there, because we don't have streetlight, you know, good streetlights, and, you know, they want to make sure they get it all done properly. There's a lot of handwork that they need to do around the parking stalls.
But it's good, it's during the slow time, and if they'll work around, like the Fourth of July, then.
Correct.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Hanson, still my question. That's all I had, was timing. Timing is important around here, because we do have certainly our peaks. Any other questions for staff on this item? Or all the, any of these items? All right, good, we're on, on item number eleven. Can we get a motion on that item?
Mayor?
Councilmember Brawki?
Move to approve change order C two thousand eleven one-two-five dot one between cactus asphalt and the town of Fountain Hills not to exceed eighteen thousand dollars.
Second? Thank you. Is there anyone in the public on that item?
No, sir.
Does he have, no, if there are on the other items? Any eleven, twelve, or thirteen?
None.
All right, thanks. All right, got a first and a second? Any other comments? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Mayor, seven zero.
Thank you. Item twelve, consideration authorized town manager to approve change order C two thousand eleven dash one-two-seven dot one with slurry, Southwest Slurry Seal Inc. in the amount not to exceed sixty-eight thousand. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
All right, any questions on that one? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mayor, seven zero.
Thank you. And item thirteen, consideration of authorizing town manager to approve First Amendment to contract C two thousand eleven dash one-twenty-eight with pavement marking ink in an amount not to exceed twelve thousand five hundred. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that one? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Mayor, seven zero.
Thank you. Thanks, Paul. Item fourteen, consideration of approving a professional services contract with PFM Asset Management for Investment Management Services of Town Funds. Julie?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Back in December, we amended the town's financial policies to allow for investment in other than the local government investment pool. Currently, the town keeps all of our idle funds, meaning funds that we're not using in the, in the LGIP, and the return on that investment is, has been less than one percent. It was actually point oh-six percent this year. So we, we intended to take some money and invest it with another option, and we copied or piggybacked off of a contract with the city of Goodyear that was the same company that the cities of Scottsdale, Oral Valley, Tempe, Chandler, Mesa also issued an RFP for investment services and went with the same company. So we piggybacked with that contract and to be able to invest our funds with this PFM asset management. PFM invests just solely for municipalities and governments, that's their only clients, and they will also follow the town's investment policy guidelines. They won't invest in anything that's not allowed in our policy. With that, I'd be happy, I'll just mention also, this contract, once we enter this contract, this isn't authorizing us to put any money to that fund. We will come back to the council when we want to take the money out of the pool and transfer it over to PFM Asset Management. We will bring that back to the council. This is just authorizing the, the contract.
All right, thank you. Anyone from the public on this item?
No, sir.
All right. Council, look for a motion.
Mayor?
Yep.
Move to approve professional services agreement between the town of Fountain Hills and PFM Asset Management for Investment Services through February twenty-twelve.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions on this item? Julie, is there an upfront cost on this item?
No, Mayor.
All right. Any questions? All right, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Mayor, seven zero.
Thanks very much. Thanks, Julie. Consider, next item, council, this special direction town manager, nothing on that item tonight. And item sixteen, summary of council request, report on recent activity by the deputy town manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Two things from tonight's meeting. The phone number for Allied Waste would be put on our town's website and Channel Eleven, and also to move forward with the potential with an IGA with the sanitary district for the water quality.
Yeah, and make sure we get a place, placeholder for our potential June, late June meeting, and then ultimately, when we do the IGA, we do another joint meeting with the sanitary district. Councilmember Brawki?
Mayor, just one thing as far as staff. Going back to regular agenda, item four, I know there had been some discussion between staff about televising the meeting on Monday and Wednesday, special sessions? That's correct. I understood that we were going to have those televised, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Just for the public's information.
Exactly, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Excellent. Anything else? Julie?
No, Mayor.
All right, just want to mention, great Memorial Day services on Monday, the thirtieth, at nine AM at the Veterans Memorial there at Fountain Park. Encourage everybody to come out. It's always a great experience for folks, young and old, families, come on out and have a great Memorial Day service to remember our veterans at our own Veterans Memorial. It's just beautiful there. And thank you very much. Look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And a second? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nay.
Nine oh five.
Yes. Oh, good, yeah, absolutely.